Any opposed? Motion carries.
On the first extension, calling BOA 779-371, 191 to 195 Bowden Street.
Please come to the table.
Name an address for the record, please.
Chair.
Chair.
And the board, Josh Fairchild with Hackett Feinberg at 155 Federal Street.
And tell us what the proposal was and the reason for the extension?
The proposal was to build, I believe, forty-one.
Forty-one unit apartment building with six thousand plus or minus square feet of commercial space on the ground floor.
And what's the reason for the request for the extension?
The zoning appeal was granted almost two years ago. We had hoped to receive our state funding in the February 2019 round. Unfortunately, we did not. But we have received our funding in the October mini-round, so we will be ready to break ground this coming summer.
Madam Chair, the permit does not expire until March 6th of 2020. Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 661-026-236 to 256 Dorchester Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moransey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this was an application for five-story, thirty-two residential unit mixed-use building in South Boston. It was approved by this board in February of 2018. The decision would expire March 2nd of this year, 2020. The reason for the delay is that the property sits virtually in the midst of the E&amp;M Lynch Homes at the Old Colony, Boston Housing Authority Development. That project is currently in Phase Three of its redevelopment master plan, so two sides of the site are public ways. The other two sides of the site are surrounded by ongoing construction being done by the BHA in order to avoid conflicts. My client has not been able to start construction on his own project.
Madam Chair, Mr. Moransey is correct. The permit does not expire until March 2nd of 2020. Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling next case, a board final arbiter, calling BOA 812921-543 to 547 Boylston Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning. John Gorman, 43 Charles Street, Boston.
So tell us why you're before us.
This is an address correction issue. The single page that's being handed out right now.
So will you summarize for us? You know, we have a lot of cases ahead of us, so please tell us what the address is on the record and what is the correct address, Lynn?
The address for the proposed Burger chain is 543-547 Boylston Street, also known as 545. It used to be, in 2012, Firehouse Subs, and there was a ZBA approval for takeout, this petitioner only, back in 2012. And then Firehouse Subs left and Mediterranean, New Mediterranean.
So for the record, you're telling us that the correct address for Smash Burger is 545 Boylston Street?
Yes, and for Firehouse Subs and for Mediterranean New.
So may I have a motion, please, to correct the record that for the takeout provisos and the appeal that we approved, number 812921, that the correct address is 545 Boylston Street?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just a reminder that the provisos are the same. The takeout provisos are the same.
Thank you. Calling a next case for G Card, calling BOA 104-2840-416 Beacon Street. This is interior and exterior renovations of the four-story brick row house. Proposed work includes repairs to exterior, masonry, window replacement, energy-efficient upgrades. The violation is Article 32, Section 9, G Card enforcement. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Edric Van Busicum. I'm the architect for the project. The address is 1310 Broadway in Summerville.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have the BWSE approval letter.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
May I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good presentation.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-2492-451 Beacon Street. This is to extend the existing driveway. The violation is Article 32, Section 9. This is in the G Card enforcement. Name an address for the record, please.
Robert Weintraub, 451 Beacon Street. I'm the owner.
Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have the BWSE approval letter.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
Motion over.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor, address, please.
Yes, sir, the very first one, 29 R Bigelow Street.
For the record, calling BOA 977-902-29R-Bigelow Street. There was a companion case, BOA 977-908-29-Bigelow Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Dennis Quilty, Attorney at McDermott Quilty and Miller, representing the property owner, here to request a deferral. We had a snafu in scheduling with the local neighborhood association. That meeting was rescheduled for March 5th, coming up very quickly. We suggested to them at that meeting that we would ask for a deferral today to attend that meeting and come back to you at the earliest possible date.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a date of April 28th at 11:30.
So we will hear this case in its entirety on April 28th at 11:30?
Thank you.
Anybody who's here for it?
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor, address, please.
Yeah, I'm going to butter to 29.
It's a deferral, sir.
So it's just that day in April?
Yep.
Thank you.
Address, please.
190 Calumet Street.
For the record, calling BOA 992-849-190 Calumet Street. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. My address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. We are seeking a deferral in order to schedule one more community hearing with the Community Alliance. We weren't able to meet with them in February. We're going to meet with them next week and ask for permission to defer.
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of April 28th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. It's supposed to be an administrative deferral, but 104-106 Warren. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to...
Do you need me to ask for it, or was it already?
That's all right. I have it here. We'll take care of it. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Madam Chair, as the counselor just stated, I'm going to just call it into the record.
Is this for 9:30?
104-106, yes. 104-106. Warren Street has been deferred to March 24th at 11:30.
March 24th at 11:30?
Yeah, so I'm sorry. For the record, calling BOA 993-904-104-106 Warren Street.
So that's just administrative, so may I have a motion anyway?
Motion for a deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30 only? Hearing none, we'll call the first case. Calling BOA 101-4116, 13 Greylock Road. This is a change of occupancy from existing single-family residential dwelling to a five-family residential dwelling with five parking spaces, also to add a rear inside addition and renovate. The violation is Article 51, Section 56. Our street parking is insufficient. Article 51, Section 8, the MFR is a forbidden use in a 2F 5,000 sub-district. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient, and Article 51, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. With me, I have Jacob Simmons, one of the principals of 13 Greylock, and Tanya Carrier from Cult Design, the architect on the project. This proposal, we're seeking to change the occupancy from an existing one-family to a five-family building with five parking spaces in the rear. This would also include a rear and side addition and to completely renovate the building. Just to go over the layouts.
So first, tell us what zoning district is this in?
This is a 2F 5,000, Madam Chair.
Okay, and explain to us, describe to us what you're proposing to do?
So we're proposing to change from the existing occupancy of a one-family to five units, keeping the building, so we're not raising the building, but adding an addition to the side in rear and also renovating the entire building as well. The floor plan layout has two duplex units with lower levels for an average of 1,208 square foot units. Those would be two-bedroom units. Units three and four, one-bedroom units at 655 on average, and Unit 5 is a three-bedroom unit at 1,356 square feet. The zoning violations, use was triggered in a 2F district, and we are proposing five. Our FAR is .91. What's allowable is .6 for this district. The height, we do meet the height in feet at 34 feet, seven inches. However, we are going up to add dormers to make that third floor, so that would trigger a height violation in stories. Two and a half is allowed, and we're proposing three. Our front yard is pre-existing, no change. It's 19, but 20 is required. And side yard, 10 is required. We meet that on the left. This is pre-existing. We have 23 feet, three inches. And on the right, we have three feet, one inch, but the building remains.
Is that where you're proposing to add the addition?
So the addition is in the rear and on the...
The rear and the side?
Correct. So if you take a look at the addition on top, it's the...
Yes, so if you take a look at the A020, you can see in dark gray where the addition's going on the rear and then on the right side. And then we're proposing dormers on the top floor as well.
So tell us why, I mean, you haven't given us a rationale why. It seems that you already have good use. This is a two-family zoning. What's the rationale to go up to a five dwelling unit?
So, one, we're proposing extensive renovation, and this would help ease that burden. Secondly, around us has, I mean, to the left of us is a six-unit apartment complex, and there are apartment complexes in and around the area. I believe we have a list that we can read just across from us and next door in our immediate area. We are able to provide five parking spaces in the rear of the property.
And what's required?
What is required would be seven.
Because the design and the layout of this building looks like it's very similar to all the buildings down the street. I know that there's that brick building next door.
Correct.
But this will be a step in changing the character of that neighborhood.
That was one of the reasons, Madam Chair. We worked with the ACA to keep the building itself, so we didn't want to raise the building. So by keeping the actual building and adding the addition, we still left that similar design to the other buildings.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, I have a number of problems with the plans. First off, the rendering is very nice. It makes it look like it's a little house on the prairie. This is an urban dense neighborhood. And I think that it's, you owe anybody who is looking at the plans to have contextual renderings as opposed to... But that's more an aesthetic thing. I would beg to differ with you on the average unit size being averaged at 655 for units three and four. That's not accurate. I know you said that because 650 is the city's minimum. The Unit 3 is 580 square feet, and Unit 4 is 630 square feet. That's what the plans show, and that's less than what is required by the minimum, and these are not compact living units. So I have a problem with this.
And is there any dwelling space proposed for the basement, Mr. Olick?
No, these are, no, these are used in...
These are all?
Yeah, these are on the second floor, I believe.
Okay.
I could ask.
Yes, please respond.
Just to, I don't know if, there might be just a discrepancy on the plan. I just don't know, because when we...
Well, these are the plans that you provided, and they show for Unit 3, 580 square feet. It shows in several locations. And for Unit 4, 630 square feet. If that does not, I may not be a MIT math major, that does not average out to 65.
Right, so I would just ask, and then also the design, so we can get better pictures of the context as well. If we could, if I could seek a deferral today, just to go back and look at the layouts and see where we came up with.
You've already made your presentation. And so we are in the process of a hearing, so let me proceed. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We conducted an abutters meeting on October 7th. We ended up receiving eight letters of support from the abutters and two letters in opposition from the abutters. They went on to the Austin Civic Association, where they had a lengthy conversation on what the design of the project would look like and ultimately received support from that neighborhood civic.
Can I ask you a question before you step down?
Certainly.
Why is the mayor's office in support of a project that violates the city guidelines?
Just from the feedback from the neighborhood. Like I said, you know, they met with the Austin Civic Association.
These are city guidelines about square foot minimums.
Sure. I mean, that was a conversation that came from the community, that they were in support of this project, and that's how we responded.
Anybody else speak in support? Is, are you speaking in opposition?
Actually, in support at this time. I am...
Okay, please put your name and address on the record, yes?
Sorry, Connie Ballademos. I own 15 Greylock Road, the building right adjacent to it. I was extremely opposed to this initially, and I know I wrote a letter to you guys, and just for the abutters meeting, we were not notified of any abutters meeting, but that's a different point. But we have worked out, I have had a lot of issues with the trash and them trespassing on my property. We have worked out some agreement where we've put, they'll put up a fence between our properties, and they will modify the existing plans, because the current plans do not have any allocation for any trash receptacles at all. So they would have continued to use my trash dumpsters for their purposes, but they have now agreed to modify their plans to have trash receptacles and to put up a fence to help prevent their tenants, construction people, and everybody else from trespassing.
So they couldn't maintain their property as a one-family?
Correct.
And you have faith that they'll do it as a five?
I am hoping with these changes that they will. I do not, you know, I had called them many times with the last, and I know I've sent you guys letters with pictures for the last nine months, and I got no responses from them. Since then, I've been in contact with someone else who is eager to show me that they will address the issues. I have installed $7,000 worth of cameras around my property. I've installed a locking dumpster within my property to try to fix the problems that I've had.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Can you name an address for the record?
This is regarding 13 Greylock Road.
Yeah.
I'm the neighbor. I never hear any communication with me.
Are you in support or opposition?
Support. They build family or against?
Yes, are you in support of them?
I'm not support.
You're against the proposed, okay? And for what reason?
I'm across the street with 13 Greylock Road. I'm 12 Greylock Road. Since, you know, their property is not maintenance, it's so weird. The trash across the street with my house for the, for over one week. The trash, the papers blow all to my property. I have this complaint all the time. So the constable sent the letters. I told him, he said, I need to come here to, I have the right to against this project. Because once the landscape, they are, is higher than my house. You know, any construction purpose damage my house or cause the landscape crashing, damaging my house foundation, they need the responsibility for fix any construction issue, damage to my house, and the cleaning issue by their tenants.
Thank you.
It's just one family, the five family.
Hold on, hold on, thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Give me new information. If somebody's already said what you said, please just put your name and address on the record, okay?
Yeah.
Ma'am, can you sit down, please?
Oh, my name is Sam Hui. I live at 4 Greylock Road, and the rat problem is horrendous in the Alson Bright neighborhood. I'm a licensed exterminator for over 20 years. I've caught between a year and a half, almost 200 rats in my backyard alone from everybody's trash.
Tell us about this proposal. What is your issue with them going from a one-family to a five-family?
Well, the trash that it'll generate, and it's the parking and the noise that's generally associated with any increase.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, given this information, is there a response?
Madam Chair, again, I just would like to seek...
Can you speak up, please?
I would like to seek a deferral, if possible.
We've gone through the entire hearing process. We've had testimony. This is decision time. May I have, do you have, do you have a response?
The response is, we have worked with the neighbors. We did have multiple community meetings. We work directly with our director of butter to address this.
Do you own the property?
Yeah, I'm with you.
How long have you owned it?
We've owned it since August.
Since August?
Correct.
And since August, these issues have been going on, or have you been responsive to those issues?
So there have been issues, some of which have more recently been brought to our attention, but we've, in the very recently, worked out a plan with our next-door neighbors to address the trash issues, to address the parking concerns, and we feel moving forward that we're in a good spot to be a good neighbor.
Good. So it sounds like we have a couple of issues here. One is lack of neighborliness, and secondly, we have an issue with the unit sizes. Given that information, and this is also a two-family district, and the applicant is proposing five units, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice, without prejudice, so they can come back with an alternate set of plans that is consistent with city guidelines.
And please read five units as two dens, okay? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. In the meantime, as an owner, you're going to still put up the fence, and you're still going to deal with the trash?
Correct.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-3657, 19 Blue View Circle. This is demolish the existing house, erect a two-and-a-half-story, single-family home on the existing 17,604 square foot lot. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. The lot frontage is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Michael Moran of 19 Blue View Circle in West Roxbury. To my right is my wife, Jacqueline Zawada. We are the homeowners at 19 Blue View Circle.
So tell us, you're proposing the demolition of the building and the construction of another single-family building?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us about the front yard violation.
So the front yard violation is the lot frontage. We're here today seeking relief in order to build that single-family home where we intend to raise our family.
So what's required and what do you have? It looks like you have an odd-shaped lot with a steep slope. Is that what we are seeing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
So we have forty-nine, a little bit over 49 feet because of the location at the end of that cul-de-sac. As you can see from the site plan, it's a very unique lot. Because of that, the positioning at the end of the cul-de-sac, we have 49 feet, 60 feet is required. However, we do have a 17,604 square foot lot.
Hold on, hold on. What was I going to ask you? And so this is a single-family. It's going to be stick-built?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support. We had a butters meeting on December 12th. No neighbors came. They went, then went before. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council received unanimous support from their council, and I'd just like to reiterate that support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project as well.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, the council would go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Sabi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a BPDA.
BPDA design review? It's a new construction. Let's go for it. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-1470, 52 Withington Street. Is Withington Street here? Hold that to the side. Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-4267, 53 Greenbrier Street. This is a change in occupancy from a two to a three-family. No work to be done. Kitchen in the third unit, third unit only. Violation is Article 65, Section 41. Our street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, a three-family dwelling use is forbidden. Name an address for the record, please.
Vladimir Sirori, 53 Greenbrier Street, Dorchester.
So this is a proposal to change the occupancy from a two, two, or three family. So where is that third unit proposed, in the attic or in the basement?
Attic.
It's in the attic?
Yes.
Tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the attic. It's five feet.
It's okay.
It's been assessed as a three-family since 1986.
I get it, but what's the floor-to-ceiling height in there? Do we have it on the record? Do we have it on the record, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, hang on. I'm just looking, going through the plans again. When I looked at it yesterday, it was all right.
And how many square feet is it?
The drawings don't show that. It's a stamp by an engineer, not an architect, so...
How many square feet is that unit? Tom, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of my colleague Christine Brando, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Destin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd like to go on record requesting that they defer until they can meet with the Neighborhood Association. I spoke with the Neighborhood Association leader of UNA, and they were not aware of this project.
Okay, so you're saying that this unit has been around for how long?
Since 1986.
So since '86, and can you tell us the size of the unit?
It's approximately 500 square feet.
500 square feet. It's a studio, one-bedroom?
One-bedroom.
It's a one-bedroom?
Yes.
Is that okay, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, the drawings show dimensions for individual rooms, but not the overall. I mean, I suppose, like, hang on, I could probably add it up. I think it's more than 500 square feet, actually.
Okay, so if you have a level of comfort with it, may I have a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 958-462, 18 Uslid Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a single-family and change of occupancy to a three-family dwelling, construct an addition for two units on the existing structure. The violation is Article 65, Section 42.2, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 42.3, traffic visibility across the corner. Article 65, Section 9, maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per dwelling unit. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. And Article 65, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. Name an address for the record, please.
Sean Smith, 37 Blake Street, Hyatt Park.
Claude Wright, eighteen Euclid Street, Dorchester.
Chris Adnan, eighteen Euclid Street, Dorchester.
So, tell us what's being proposed. Do you have drawings so that we can understand what's being proposed?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're proposing two-unit addition onto an existing one, single-family house.
Okay. And how is that going to be accomplished? By going up or?
To the, to the right of the house, to the, to the right of the existing house.
Okay, and what will be the ultimate size of each unit?
There'll be approximately forty-one hundred square feet.
So, all told, the building will be forty-one hundred?
The total, the total will be about six thousand square feet. The total, both units, it'll be about six thousand square feet.
So, tell us the size of unit one, unit two, and unit three.
Unit one, dear, um, unit one is one thousand, is one thousand, one hundred, one thousand, one hundred and thirty square feet.
Okay. Unit two?
Is the same.
And unit three?
No, no, it's what it is, unit one, I'm sorry, unit one is four thousand, one hundred, unit two is four thousand, one hundred. We do, we're doing, it'll be a single-family, a single-family along with an existing single-family.
I, I'm having a hard time understanding this, so.
It's basically almost in the concept of like, three townhouses. So, each unit would be a, a single-family dwelling.
So, there's an existing house?
Yes, the one on the left-hand side is, is existing.
And then you're building two units?
We're proposing, yes.
And are the garages facing the street?
Yes, they're facing the street, yes.
This is an interesting design. And each unit, each unit number two and number three is four thousand?
Thousand, one hundred, yes.
Then, how many bedrooms?
I believe two.
Two bedrooms for four thousand?
Yeah, it is, it's, what it is, is one unit is for, is for mom and the other unit is for Chris. So, the first, the units basically have like, three bedrooms in each one.
Okay. And, so you, there's a number of violations on this. So, tell us about, the, first of all, you have insufficient lot size. What is the lot size?
I don't, I don't have any.
Approximately fifty-nine hundred square feet.
So, the lot, the entire lot is fifty-nine hundred square feet?
Yes, it's a corner lot.
Pardon?
It's, it's a corner lot, it's on the corner of Euclid Street.
Okay, so, okay, may I?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mr. Olick, can I rely on you to kind of walk us through this?
Well, it's somewhat, I understand the difficulty because they look like they come from a software package. They're not drawings that are done by an architect, so it's a little bit hard to tell. The one thing I think that, Madam Chair, that you will not be thrilled about is that the garage doors are awfully wide and that if we were to approve this, I think for design review, we'd want them, it's, it, it looks, it looks like it's over fourteen feet for the, for the garage doors.
You know, may I suggest a parole on this so that we can understand how the buildings fit on the lot? Because we are looking at the, at the detailed design here, but we cannot see what your side yard is, what your rear yard is, and how everything works together, where your parking is for the existing building, maybe there is, maybe there isn't parking. So, may I have a motion for, for deferral on this so that, and please hire an architect, and this is supposed to be stick-built?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, hire somebody who can help tell the story on it.
Okay.
Okay? Because that'll be easier for us to make a decision. Okay?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please.
We have a date of April twenty-eighth at eleven-thirty.
Is that enough time for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. See you then.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 992-884, sixty to sixty-two Codman Hill Avenue. This is extend living area into the basement and attic and close the front and rear porches, add a dormer to the top floor, replace one interior wall with beam, new kitchen, bath, pour a new slab in the basement for a living area. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by my client and the property owner, David Dryman. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to take an existing two-family dwelling at sixty sixty-two Codman Hill Avenue, not change occupancy, but simply extend living area into the basement. The refusal letter notes enclosed front and rear porches, that's actually incorrect, the porches are already enclosed. Primarily, this is an application to add a dormer to the top floor level. This would convert it for zoning purposes from a two-and-a-half story to a three-story dwelling because of the additional living space on the top floor, the half-story. That leads to the violation for excessive building height. That's a story height violation only, the building's height is thirty feet, three inches within the thirty-five maximum of the code. The floor area ratio would go from point eight-five to point eight-seven. The maximum FAR in the district is point eight, hence the FAR violation, and there's a side yard insufficiency. The side yard insufficiency is attributable to the addition of the dormer on the side of the building that is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the side setback. The dormer itself is inset a couple of feet from the edge of the existing building.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Seven feet, my client advises.
Seven feet?
Seven feet. The lot size is fifty-five hundred square feet. The two units would be on the basement and first floor, a two-bedroom unit, and then a three-bedroom unit for the second and, and the third floor.
And so, the basement, the proposed, uses a family room?
Correct.
Likewise, the attic with one bedroom in the attic?
Correct. My, my client and his family will be, will be living here, his wife and his daughter will be living in the second unit.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are okay. Seven feet is permissible for one or two families, so that's, that's all right. The, it's on, it's on a slope in sight, so that some of the basement is underground and some of it is above ground. How's that work?
There's a slight slope when you get behind the building entirely, but there's, and there's a, on the non-conforming side, there is a pathway, a cement pathway that leads to a side entrance into the basement, and there is a slope there.
What I'm asking, so is it window wells, is that, how?
The windows are above grade in the basement space.
Completely above grade?
Yeah.
All right, the drawings are fine.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I held in a Butters meeting for this project. We've also received letters of support from neighbors in the back and the rear, and also neighbors on the side, especially regarding the dormer being added. And also, this property will be meeting with the Dunn Association tomorrow, just so they're aware of this change. Thank you, would like to go on record in support.
Yes, and for the record, Madam Chair, we, we did become aware that the Dorchester United Neighborhood Association would like to review this. My client has committed to going to their meeting tomorrow evening. Here are two of the letters that were submitted to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, which I'll submit in the record.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-7521, eighty-one to eighty-one A, Rentham Street. Rentham Street here? This is construct a new two-family dwelling on Lot B for subdivision. The existing structure to be razed on a separate demolition permit. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, our street parking loading. Article sixty-five, Section forty-two, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article sixty-five, Section eight, the use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient lot width. Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient righat setback. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
I don't have one, I'm sorry.
Name and address for the record, please.
Paullette Whitaker, at eighty-one, eighty-one A. This is a one-family.
I'm sorry, can you speak up? I'm just having a hard time hearing today.
Paullette Whitaker, this is a building that, one family that's gonna be built in the back of my property. I live at seventy-nine. This will be in the back, in the back area.
Okay, um, I am, I'm looking at the drawings and it looks like you're trying to subdivide a lot to create what essentially is, so how, what's the access, well, why don't you talk through what you're proposing to do?
I'm trying to build a one-family house in the back of my existing property that will.
Did you hire an architect for this?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes, I did, and he was unable to attend. I just received the notice that he had to go at his child, something with his child.
May we have a deferral, please, so we can have, have you adequately represented at the hearing, okay?
Why don't you put a deferral?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please.
We have a date of April twenty-eighth at eleven-thirty.
Okay, so please have your architect here so he can adequately represent you.
Yes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-5494, seventy-nine Beaumont Street. Beaumont Street here? Calling the next case, next two cases, calling BOA 102-5909, eighteen Sunset Street. There is companion case, BOA 102-5915, twenty Sunset Street. This is for changing the occupancy of a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling. The violation is Article fifty-nine, Section thirty-seven, our street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section seven, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, a lot width is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, lot frontage is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. This is for twenty Sunset, it's to change occupancy from a three-family to a four-family, and the violations are identical, I'll say, I'm sorry, with exceptions, I'm gonna have to change it. The violation is Article fifty-nine, Section thirty-seven, our street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section seven, multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, lot width is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, lot frontage is insufficient. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-nine, Section eight, building height, number of stories is excessive. And Article fifty-nine, Section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle from Drago Toscano with the business address of fifteen Broad Street here in Boston. With me this morning is Laura Maris, the owner of unit, of eighteen, unit four Sunset, as well as Gina Aloizio, the owner of unit twenty-four Sunset. As the secretary mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy at both of these structures from a three-family to a four-family, which reflects the existing conditions. We're not proposing any work to be done except to implement additional fire protection measures. The zoning sub-district is a three-F, two-thousand, and the total lot size is four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five square feet. Just to give a little further background on this case, this has been existing condition since the nineteen thirties, according to some of ISD's records. There was never an official CO which labeled these as four individual units. However, throughout the years, nineteen thirty-six, nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine, et cetera, there were short forms, electrical forms, other ISD forms that labeled this.
About the more recent history?
So, the more recent history is in nineteen eighty-one, the two, so eighteen and twenty are two separate distinct buildings with a firewall that goes all the way up, however, it's on one lot and was under common ownership. In nineteen eighty-one, a master deed was filed to create officially eight condominium units. This was recorded with the Registry of Deeds. The units are eight, eight separately-owned units, they're not under common ownership at all. Ms. Maris and Ms. Aloizio both purchased their units in the year of twenty eighteen. Following this sale, there was a routine inspection, and that's when it was discovered that even though these units have been in existence for seventy-five years and recorded with the registry for forty.
Have they been paying taxes as far?
Since back at least until nineteen seventy-two, by our records, they've been taxed as eight individual units.
Okay, so tell us about the unit that is being, you're seeking to legalize, the units.
So, the units themselves are the two top units, eighteen, four Sunset and twenty-four Sunset. Both of them are one-bedroom, one-bath units at just under eleven hundred square feet. They are the top floor of the building, of the structure. Formally, they were attic space, as I mentioned, until the nineteen thirties, and then at some point, they were converted and recognized as legalized units. So, all the violations that were mentioned go back into the thirties and were just never formally approved. Just to run through them quickly.
So, tell us, I'm looking at drawing A one point one and the fourth full plan. Tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in, in this, in the space?
So, the average floor-to-ceiling height is about eight feet. There are some dormers, skylights, so it does vary a little bit, but the majority of living space is an eight-foot ceiling. From the front picture, it's a little hard to distinguish because of the grade change, but you can see the front dormers there, and as, as you move back through the units, the, the ceiling height does raise to provide adequate, adequate head height. The violations, just to run through them quickly, as mentioned, they are all just brought up, brought upon by this formal request to change the occupancy. However, no work is being proposed except for additional fire measure, fire protection measures. The use allowed on each is a three-F. We're proposing to legalize the fourth unit on both. Floor air ratio allowed is one point oh, we're proposing a one point nine. Again, no additional living space, no additions, just reflecting the conditions.
What's the second means of egress for that top unit?
So, the second, there never has been a second means of egress for that unit. What we're proposing is to install a brand-new fire alarm panel system. It would be two distinct panels, one for eighteen and one for twenty, but they would be connected. And so, basically, the system we're proposing, and we're working with BFD to finalize this, is to, because they're separate systems, if eighteen were to trigger, the door to access the deck and to access unit twenty-four would unlock, so you could traverse through the neighbor's property just as a means of emergency egress. That would only be automatically unlocked if the panel were to go off. We've been working, as I mentioned, with ISD and BFD to finalize this plan, and that was, that's what we would be implementing.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, the drawings are okay, you know, they're just reflecting existing conditions, and as the attorney said, all units are about, a little under eleven hundred square feet. So, I was gonna ask about that second means of egress. Do you have, the Boston Fire Department's okay with that, that plan that you're laying out?
Yes, they are. We worked with a, a code consultant as well as BFD to formalize the plan, and that's, that's what we'd be proposing.
Was that simpler than just doing another exterior stairwell, or?
Yes, in some regards, because the existing stairwell would then have to fully be brought up to code and it would, so that, that's kind of what we worked on with ISD, is the, is the simplest way to rectify a second means of egress. Again, it is reflecting existing conditions, there never was one, and, and working with BFD, that was the best way to have an alternative compliance.
All right, well, I mean, if, if BFD is comfortable with that, then the drawings are fine.
And there's, there's no, and there's no way of doing it independently, because, you know, we've seen relationships go south, and then, you know, people come to the board trying to help, ask us to, to solve problems. So, there's no way of doing this independently.
The eighteen and twenty separately?
Yep. The, the fire, the second means of egress.
Right, this was the way that we worked through with ISD and BFD as a best result. The whole condominium trust is supportive at this time. That's our best compliance.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant received full support from the community, including the Community Alliance of Mission Hill and Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services, and the Butters meeting I conducted at the end of December. At this time, we have no questions and concerns, and the Mayor's Office would like to go on[1774.83] and the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Emily Brown from Councilor Kenzie Box Office. The councilor would like to go on record in support of both 18 and 20 Sunset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Asabi Georgia's office. Would like to echo the sentiments of Councilor Box Office and support both projects. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Richard Johnson. I live in the building at 20 Sunset Street, Unit 3, downstairs from Lauren and Gina. And all the reasons for my support have already been stated. I've been there for 17 years, and these units have been in this condition. And Lauren and Gina are both phenomenal neighbors.
Good morning, Chairman of, Members of the Board. My name is Ann Antonellis, and I've lived at 20 Sunset Street, Unit 2, since 1994, and it has always been this, and everything's been stated. I'm just in support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, just for the record, I do have support letters from the Community Alliance of Mission Hill, the Mission Hill Neighborhood Services.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your all said, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1038351, 2147 to 2153 Washington Street. This is to construct a new six-story mixed-use building. Structure will consist of a total of 74 residential units, 62 rental apartments, 12 for sale condos, condominiums. 12,857 square feet of commercial space, local retail business, restaurant, public art display, art use, artist, mixed use, and accessory parking. There will be one level of underground parking. The new building will create an apostle, combining, hiring apostles and rely upon a ground lease. The violation is Article 50, Section 10. Restaurant with entertainment is conditional. Article 50, Section 10. Artist mixed use is conditional. Article 50, Section 11, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 50, Section 11, building height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Gregory Minot. I'm representing the project as a co-developer and architect. My business address is 31 St. James, Boston, Massachusetts.
Brian Goldson, business address of 236 Huntington Ave.
William Matson Hardy, 236 Huntington Ave.
So tell us what's being proposed?
So we're proposing to erect a new six-story building on three distinct parcels with a combined square footage of 23,000 square feet. We're building in Roxbury. On these three parcels, it's a zoning sub-district of Roxbury Neighborhood, sub-district of Dudley Square EDA. And that breaks down to subject type and overlays of economic development area, neighborhood design review, and boulevard planning district. We are seeking relief for conditional use. Haley House, who is a neighborhood anchor, is a current neighborhood anchor, will be part of the project, and we're seeking relief for conditional use to expand Haley House's footprint with a new café, which would double their seating capacity. We're also seeking to have artist space, shared maker space on the ground floor of the building to catalyze entrepreneurship in the area. And we're seeking a variance for that conditional use, for shared studios on the ground floor. We're also seeking relief for FAR. We are proposing a 3.6 FAR and max height of 69.9 feet, in excess of 55 feet.
So what's required on the FAR?
2.0.
2.0, and what's the building height requirement?
55 feet.
I'm sorry?
55 feet.
55 feet, okay. So you've gone through your violations?
Yes.
And so your restaurant that on record is Haley House. So tell us about the units. Tell us the breakdown, the studios, how many, and the average square feet for the studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms? Are you proposing any three bedrooms?
Yes, correct.
Three bedrooms. And tell us how many affordable units in the, in the site?
Okay. So I'll just go through the units first. So we do have 62, we have rentals and condominiums. We have 62 rentals and 12 condominiums. The rental breakdown is we have nine studios, 33 one-bedrooms, 16 two-bedrooms, four three-bedrooms.
And the average sizes of all these units?
For the rentals, the average size is 501 square feet.
Sorry?
For the, the average size for the studios is 501 square feet.
Okay. One bedrooms?
610 square feet.
Okay.
Three, two bedrooms is 819 square feet. And three bedrooms is 1106 square feet.
Okay. And tell us about the sales?
The sales? The studios' average size is 515 square feet. The one bedrooms is 591 square feet. Two bedrooms, 921 square feet. And the three bedrooms, 1117 square feet.
And how many studios, ones, twos, and threes, for sale?
We will have one, one bedroom, nine two-bedrooms, one three-bedroom, one studio.
Nine, 10, 11, 12, okay. And then, let's see, tell us about, so how many parking spaces are you proposing?
Oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
How many parking spaces are you proposing?
31 spaces.
And do you have any rooftop, rooftop decks?
No, we don't.
No roof, no decks, okay? And then, tell us about these shared studios?
The shared studio space is one large, common work studio. The units are all going to have a preference for, for artists.
They're just studios and not live-work space?
They're, no.
Okay.
Right. They're studios, not necessarily live-work. We're providing over 4,000 square feet of common workspace in addition to a 2,000-square-foot community room.
And tell us about that community room. Who does it serve?
The residents.
The residents.
The residents? Is it pure, it's purely for the residents?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Elick, how are the plans?
The drawings are, are good. But I, can you, I know you already did this. Can you walk through the unit size, the unit sizes one more time?
Sure. And I'll also provide an update on the unit, the unit count. But the average sizes, so I'll go through the rental first. Average for studios is 501 square feet. Average for...
I'm sorry, there are nine of those?
There are actually, for the rental... Sorry, I'm going to revise these numbers. We had original submission, and then we had a revised submission. So I'll just update for the record. The rental for the one bedrooms is 30. We have 21 two-bedrooms. We have four three-bedrooms.
And, and you give it average square foot size?
It is. And then the average size for the rentals is 501 square feet. 610 square feet for the one-bedroom. 819 square feet for the two-bedroom, and 1106 for the three-bedroom.
Okay. So is this part of the compact living unit program? I mean, these are, these are under guidelines, but you're talking about community space that's available? Is that, is that how you went through this for the approvals?
Yeah, we've been, we've been designing to, to DND standards and the compact living, and because we have so much common, common space, we meet those standards.
Okay. I mean, that, that's really what I'm asking.
Yeah.
As you may have heard, we had some other, you know, proposals came before us with substandard sizes, but they, but they clearly weren't part of the CLU. But this is, and this is how you approached it?
Correct. And hasn't been said, you know, this was a, a community process, a DND RFP, you know, supported by the community, chosen by the community. BPDA Design Review, DND Design Review. We've been working very closely with them.
All right, well, I mean, that, I think it's important, and I'll say, just say this in general, that when, when we get proposals come before us that are in violation of city guidelines, it's important, it's important to say what the rationale is, and that you, that that's a conscious decision as opposed to just screwing up, right?
So I appreciate that, and I very much appreciate the fact that Haley House will have a new home. For free.
And did you tell us how many affordable units?
70 of the overall 74 units will be affordable.
70 out of 74?
At, at various income ranges, a quarter.
That's 30, 30, 30?
It's mu, it's much more than that. The rental units are 100% affordable. A quarter of them to extremely low income. The rest are below, 40, 45 are below 60%, and 17 are below 80%. So those are all affordable. The homeownership is the third, a third, a third structure, 70%, 100%. And so there are four market rate units. We've actually made the, the smaller studio and one-bedroom units that are small, and the homeownership are actually going to be market rate unit.
Can I ask just one more question about, so the, you're obviously marking, marking some of the units for artists and live-work space?
A preference, yes.
A preference? That's my question. How is that, and how is that going to be done initially? And then, how will that be sustained beyond once people are already in?
Yeah, being a fully subsidized project, we will have an affirmative fair housing marketing plan and tenant selection plan approved by DND and the state and the Fair Housing Commission. That preference will be advertised. So there will be a lottery process for these units. We'll probably have thousands of applications, right? We're going to have, we'll, we're going to have a local preference as long, as, as well as the artist preference.
And is that just for the first time, filling up the building? What happens subsequently?
The preference will continue.
So is that in the deed, remoralizing the deed?
Yes. It'll be in, it'll be in the affordable housing restriction, which is recorded.
Okay, thank you.
And then, does the compact unit require bike storage space?
Yes, it does. And we have below-grade parking for the 31 parking spaces, but we also have a bike parking that is accessible from the exterior of the building, as well as the inside of the building.
Enclosed.
Enclosed.
Enclosed, yeah. So you don't have a roof deck, but you do have a fifth floor, fifth floor open deck space?
Balcony space directly accessible from the units. So being respectful of the neighbors and setting back the building on, on that side where the decks appear, that was a conscious decision on our part. And then that's only accessible from the residential units.
And it's only to those units?
Only to those units.
To the building?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Elick?
They're, they're fine.
Any additional questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Facy Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in full enthusiastic support of this project. It was a BPDA project that has had extensive community review. We're excited to see additional artist units and also income restricted units coming back to Newbyan Square, and also a permanent home for Haley House. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. My name is Pratik Dubey from the Office of Council President, Kim Janey. The councilor would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of Councilor, Michael Flaherty. Councilor, go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Asabi Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Jacob Dupliket, representing Councilor Julia Mahia's office. We would like to go on record as in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. I'm Joe Backer with the Department of Neighborhood Development. And as stated, this is utilizing city-owned land and has been awarded DND funds as well for the deeply affordable units. So we are in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Minor residents representing the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds of union carpenters that live and work throughout the city of Boston, want to go on record in support, in particularly our residents from Roxbury. And we appreciate the developer being sensitive to our needs. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Let me just see. So it sounds to me like one of our provisors needs to be a takeout provisor for the takeout use, which is conditional on it. And then it sounds like we need a design review.
I'm making motion to approve with design review and takeout language for the Haley House piece of the project.
Just, just to confirm for the record, it's not for a takeout use? It is for live entertainment? For entertainment?
So, so for live entertainment to that petition, to Haley House only?
That's correct.
Yes, to Haley House only?
Correct.
Okay. And we did not ask the hours? That's what we usually ask for live entertainment?
Hours of operation.
Yeah, we, we, we can get that information, too. We, we haven't gotten to that level of detail with Haley House.
It would be consistent with what the existing Haley House practice is.
Okay. Okay, so as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And please for design review, we just saw another project last meeting that had up on the Madison Park project. Please make it look different from this one, because it's the same still, that same dark, blocky, top to it, okay? Thank you, Greg.
I'm going to go back to two cases I called earlier. Calling BOA 1041470, 52 Withington Street. Is Withington Street here? Just erecting nine residential units with 15 parking spots. The violation is Article 65, Section 42.2. Not in conformity with the other two buildings on the same side of the block, conformity to the building alignment. Article 65, Section 8, nine units use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, a maximum 04, proposes 1.47. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Steve Suter, 344 Talbot Ave, Dorchester, Massachusetts. Owner of the site.
And I'm Eric Zacherson, the architect for the project, 1 Ludlow Street.
And tell us why you weren't here when you were first called?
I was in the back. I just clearly missed it, wasn't paying attention, Madam Chair. My apologies.
Okay. So tell us what's being proposed?
So we're proposing, it's currently a single-family on three lots, making up about 9,100 square feet. We're proposing nine units with 18 parking spots. Three of them will...
I'm sorry, so you're proposing nine units with 18 spots?
Correct, yes. Three of them are three-bed, two-baths. Six of them are two-bed, two-baths, ranging anywhere from 1,000 square feet to 1,300 square feet.
So you have a number of violations? Can you speak to the violations?
Yeah, we, the violations are largely FAR and unit count related. We, we meet the front and rear yard setbacks and, and side yard setback on, on the driveway side in order to avoid the neighbors. But the, in order to have the families, the family units that we were asked to try and provide, the three-bedroom units, the two, large two-bedroom units, we have a, we have a large building, and that's where the FAR and FAR comes from.
What's required in the zoning, and what are you proposing?
As far as FAR, the requirement is .4, and we are proposing 1.47.
You have a 9,000-square-foot lot, .4, and you're going to 1.47?
Yeah, a 13,000-square-foot gross square foot building.
Okay, and what is it with alignment conformity? Are you in alignment with the, I guess there's only one building on that?
Yeah, the other side of us is an open, open lot on the corner. And we are 15 feet back to try and match the, both the existing house and the existing neighbor's house, which is the, also the setback requirement.
How are the plans, Mr. Elick?
The drawings are okay. You quickly mentioned the unit sizes. They're, they're not spelled out on the drawings. Could you go through that again?
Sure. The first floor unit is a 1,250-square-foot, three-bed, two-bath. On the second and third floors, we have two 1,300-square-foot, three-bed, two-bath units. And six, and on the second, third, and fourth, we have six 1,050-square-foot, two-bed, two-bath units.
Okay. You're going from single-family occupancy to nine units. It's pretty dramatic.
Single-family on three lots, yes. Correct.
So if the single family's on one lot, then we have two adjacent lots, which make up the whole positive.
Which are currently empty?
Yes.
Yeah, they're currently vacant lots. Yeah, they're currently vacant lots.
Any questions from the board?
Why so much parking? Was that a community?
Yes.
Our input from the community has been asking for a lot of parking, and so we have this, we kind of have the space to do it, so we put down two units per, or two spaces per unit.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We've had an abutters meeting for this project. Residents were very vocal about their need for parking because of a lack of in that area. The CIA, Community Improvement Association, also reviewed this project thoroughly, and they were very vocal about the parking. So, we'd like to go on record and, excuse me, in support. Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council, Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
My name is Elora Thompson, and I'm the Chair of the CIA, and we were very, very vocal about parking, because we're a very tight community, and parking is at a premium. So, we approve the project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council Asabi, Georgia's office, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling another case I called earlier, calling BOA 100-5494-79, Beaumont Street. Is Beaumont Street here?
Yes.
You are.
Are you going ahead?
Yes. This is the frame and rise part of the rear side of the roof, remodel existing bathrooms, remodel kitchen. Violation, Article nine, Section one, extensive non-conforming use is conditional. Article ten, Section one, no accessory use allowed and required in the front yard setback, a swimming pool. Article ten, Section one, no off-street parking is allowed and required front yard setback. Article two-A, Section one, yard regulations, fence cannot be more than five feet in the required front yard setback. Article sixty-five, Section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard setback is setback requirement in Berkshire Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marantz, an attorney-
Counselor, the purpose of the appeal was not very clear, so will you please tell us what's really being proposed here?
Yes, I just have to put my name and address on there.
Where?
My name is George Marantz, I'm an attorney with a business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a renovation of an existing three-family building. No pool is being added, there's an existing swimming pool, actually, that's being taken out. The pool's going to be removed, the neighbors weren't in favor of the pool remaining there, it was there since before my client purchased the property. The entire building is going to be renovated from top to bottom. The, there will be a third-floor rear addition to provide some additional living space for the top-floor Unit Three, which is presently a nine-hundred-and-thirty-six-square-foot two-bedroom. I'll go through the unit and bedroom counts now, so, Unit One is actually a four-bedroom unit of eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-eight square feet, two of the bedrooms are in the basement. My client will be entirely renovating the basement, eliminating the bedrooms down there and living space. The basement is going to be converted to unit storage, laundry room for the building, and utilities. This will reduce the Unit One size by a few hundred feet, it will also reduce it from being a four-bedroom unit to be-
I'm sorry, so Unit One will ultimately be two-bedroom unit?
Three-bedroom, three-bedroom unit.
A three-bedroom, okay.
Exactly, as opposed to four, nothing in the basement. Unit Two is the second-floor unit, that's a thirteen-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot three-bedroom, that will remain a three-bedroom, and then the rear addition, the rear left addition on the third floor would increase Unit Three from a nine-hundred-and-thirty-six square-foot two-bedroom to also a two-bedroom unit, but about twelve-hundred square feet. There's a pickup on the third floor, which leads to, of space, which leads to the FAR violation. This is a three-F, five-thousand district, the maximum FAR is point five. The existing building has about a point-five FAR, but that includes living space in the basement, which is being removed, couple hundred square feet is being added on the third floor, so it's just over point five.
So what?
Exactly, and triggers the violation.
Tell us about the parking, is there front yard parking here?
Parking, that was a decidedly bad idea, I became involved in the project after my client proposed that. That was one of the, the major issue with the abutters, my client has agreed that there will be no front yard parking, that's not required parking, there's no change in occupancy in the building, he just thought it would be a good idea to add parking, unfortunately, he chose the front yard for it, which created its own violation, the neighbors didn't want it there, there will be no parking in the front yard.
Does Mr. Olick have the updated plans?
Plans do, the plans that show the parking, and I would be happy if we could keep the hearing going, and if, if this were approved, that it be approved with revised plans being submitted before signatures.
Okay, so where is the parking, if it's not in the front yard?
No parking, there's no parking existing, and no parking is being added, and then will be provided, again, no change of occupancy.
Okay, okay. And then, so the accessory use limitation was triggered by the parking, yard violations are existing?
Correct.
Front yard is existing?
Yeah, front yard is existing, the fence is an existing fence.
How tall is that fence?
I think it's a six-foot fence, it's, it's there, it can be, if, I assume this would be, if it were approved, it would be approved with BRA design review, we would look at the fence. Again, it was an existing fence, my client purchased the property, it's part of the renovation, he'll do whatever is required in order to make that fence comply. And the front yard violation, just for the record, is actually not on the Beaumont Street side, this is a corner lot, which is why it's cited for Berkshire, and that actually is attributable to the left rear addition, which creates a front yard setback violation on Berkshire Street because of the corner lot situation.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. There was an abutters meeting held on-site, and the applicants fixed all the concerns, including parking.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we will hold signature until we have revised plans.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to call the ten-thirties, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty? Address, please?
Fourteen North Bennett Street, Ward Three.
For the record, calling BOA 101-2022, fourteen North Bennett Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Daniel Toscano from Drago in Toscano, LLP, at fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass. Respectfully requesting a deferral in this matter, so we can continue to work with the neighborhood and work out some of the concerns.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
We have a date of April twenty-eighth.
April twenty-eighth, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
At eleven-thirty.
Okay.
Counselor, address, please?
Thirty-seven Monmouth Street.
For the record, calling BOA 961-465-37-MONMOUTH STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, two-forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, requesting a deferral, we were asked just last week to consider a modification of the plans, we are in the process of getting those submitted to ISD and updated for review with the examiner, and asking to put this off for a brief time to address that.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
You'll have a date of April twenty-eighth as well, at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, address, please?
One-oh-three-dash-one-eleven Arch Street.
For the record, calling BOA 990-167, one-oh-three to one-eleven Arch Street. Name and address for the record.
Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Toscano with an address of fifteen Broad Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, seeking a deferral, we were asked by the bid, they were not, they weren't active for a few months to come before them again, and as well as working with the counselor's office in the district, so we would respectfully ask for a deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
We also have a date of April twenty-eighth at eleven-thirty.
I'm sorry, I'm actually, would it be possible to get the next available after April twenty-eighth?
Sure. We can do May fifth.
Perfect, thank you.
May fifth at eleven-thirty.
May fifth at eleven-thirty?
Yeah, I have another one.
Oh, okay. Address?
Seven Wordsworth Street.
For the record, calling BOA 102-4093, seven Wordsworth Street. Name and address for the record.
Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Toscano with an address of fifteen Broad Street. We are, on behalf of the petitioner, we are seeking a deferral to continue to work with the abutters on design changes of the project.
Motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We can keep the date of May fifth, two thousand twenty, eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Address, please, Cal.
One-eighty-two Webster Street.
For the record, calling BOA 100-9944, one-eighty-two Webster Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Patrick Mahoney with a business address of one-sixty Federal Street. On behalf of petitioner, seeking a deferral to continued conversations with the director abutter.
Just a minute.
So, I'm going to accuse-
So, this, this is, Mr. DeVos is accusing himself on this decision, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
We'll have a date of May fifth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Address, please?
Eight-forty-six East Broadway.
What is it again, sorry?
Eight-forty-six East Broadway.
We have that here. I'm going to call it into the record. We already have it being deferred on April seventh.
Correct, I just wanted to ensure that it was deferred today.
I'm going to call in for the record. Case BOA 102-848-2846, eight-forty-six, eight-forty-eight, East Broadway is being deferred due to a refusal letter, so it's being heard on April seventh at eleven-thirty.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and vote for you, four-seventh at eleven-thirty.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty only? That's it, Madam Chair, if you want to-
Yes, we will take, we will reconvene at eleven o'clock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going to call the first case for ten-thirty, calling BOA 103-6148, five-ninety-nine to five-ninety-nine A, East Broadway. This is direct a one-story rear addition to an existing one-story portion of the building with rear deck. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section twenty-nine, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Adam Burns, business address of five-ninety-nine East Broadway in South Boston.
Tim Johnson, architect, five-ninety-nine East Broadway, South Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is an existing mixed-use two-unit building at five-ninety-nine East Broadway. The ground floor is a commercial unit, and the second and half-story is a residential unit. Both are currently occupied. We're proposing a rear addition to the residential unit above the rear one-story portion of the building. The building is within the zoning envelope, except for roof structure restriction, we're changing the profile of the building, and that's what we're cited for. And we've met with the abutters, they asked that the rear deck be removed, which we did, and we have a support letter from the director abutter to submit.
Tell us about the roof structure.
The roof structure restriction, section of Article sixty-eight, if you change the profile of a residential building with an addition, that's what we're cited for.
So, not putting a roof deck on?
No, Madam Chair, there's no roof deck, and there was a rear deck off the second-floor addition, but we removed that also per the abutter, the neighborhood request.
And we have the most recent plans?
This, this is the most recent plan without the deck.
Do you have that, Mr. Olick?
Yes.
Okay, any, how are the plans?
The plans are fine, I, this is a funny question, it's an odd roof on the front building. Steve, is it Steve's slope?
Yes.
One side of slope.
It's one side of another, of another gable, of the other half of the gabled roof, which is our director abutter, which is supporting the project. So, we're not showing the other half, it's a slice-through.
Okay, that, that makes much more sense.
And your abutter is in support of this?
Yes, Madam Chair, we submitted a letter to that effect.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
And Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. We held onsite abutters meeting on January thirteenth, in which they addressed all the abutters' concerns, including eliminating the deck, right, at the abutters' meeting. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office, the counselor would like to go on record in support. There was a good community process and work with the abutters and neighbors in removing the rear deck. We also contacted the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, and they did not report any issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Just bring the board's attention to the BPDA recommendation that plans be submitted for design review, and that as many mature trees be preserved as possible.
Understood, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, BOA 102-7735, four-seventeen to four-twenty-three C, West Broadway. Is West Broadway here? Counselor, are there two cases together or separately here?
Separate, but same building and-
Okay, thank you. This is no construction, change of occupancy from office to tanning and eyelash extension salon. Violation is Article sixty-eight, Section seven, tanning center and extension salon use on the fourth floor are forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quilty and Miller, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. With me is the principal of the applicant business, Mia Kazaki. Also with us are her fellow partners. This is a request for a use change in a commercial building. The property is at four-twenty-seven West Broadway in South Boston, it's at the intersection of F and West Broadway, known as the CVS Building.
So, it's four-twenty-seven West Broadway?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Four-twenty-three?
Four-twenty-three.
Right, four, I'm sorry, four-twenty-three, four-seventeen to four-twenty-three.
Okay.
And so, this building is a long-existing commercial building. The space is on the fourth floor, it's an existing office space that they'd like to fit out into a beauty salon use. Their business concept, Rise and Glow, is eyelash extension and tanning salon business. They have experience operating the partnership in two other locations, one in Newbury Street and one in Watertown. And this use request is also consistent with sort of the evolution of services along West Broadway and the commercial corridor, and is also, I think, appropriate for a commercial building.
So this is a purely commercial building?
Correct.
And that the reason it was triggered because it's an MFR LS?
Correct.
And, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Your thoughts, just four minutes.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
And Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Vanessa from Councilor Flynn's office. We would like to go on, on record in support of the project. The meeting went well with the neighbors, and with Cityside Neighborhood Association also indicated their support to us as well. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-5649, four seventeen to four twenty-three C, West Broadway. This is a change of occupancy from office to hair salon on second floor and install sinks and furniture. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section eight. Hair salon on the second floor is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quilty Miller, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. With me is Troy Ochoa, who is the principal of Ochoa Salon, and the applicant for the use change in this existing commercial building at four seventeen-four twenty-three C, West Broadway.
And just for the record, Board Member DeVoe has recused himself.
Okay, thank you. So, just a little bit of background on this applicant. This is a family-run hair salon business, Ochoa. They have years of experience at two other locations in Western Mass. This is their first location in the city of Boston. This building, as I indicated in the previous case, is an existing commercial, all commercial building. The space is on the second level. It's an existing commercial unit of about twenty-three hundred square feet that they would like to fit out for this beauty salon.
And how many sinks?
I'm sorry?
How many sinks? Six sinks?
Six, yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
My drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
And Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office. We'd like to go on record in support of the project. The meeting went well with the neighbors, and the Cityside Neighborhood Association also indicated their support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-3958, one sixty-one to one sixty-five West Sixth Street. Is West Sixth Street here? Okay. This is a building roof deck. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section twenty-nine, roof structure restrictions. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Emily Two, one sixty-five West Sixth Street. I'm the applicant for the proposal.
Tell us what you're proposing to do?
I'm proposing to build a roof deck on top of my unit. It would be exclusive use of my unit, access through a roof hatch.
Through a hatch?
Yeah.
And what's the dimension of that, of that deck?
It's approximately sixteen by twenty-one feet, and part of the deck is a part of the hatch, so it's a little bit smaller than that.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay, and it accesses my hatch, which we like.
Any questions from the board?
Is there a roof deck on the, on the property next to you?
Yes. So, one sixty-one and one sixty-five West Sixth Street are combined buildings, and the top unit of one sixty-one has an existing roof deck with a hatch.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
And Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. I also want to point out the fact that Cityside Neighborhood Association is in opposition, but they stated at the meeting that they oppose all roof decks, so just to stay to their standard. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition, as the Cityside Neighborhood Association conveyed that they are opposed due to noise concerns and quality of life issues. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-3034, two fifty Newbury Street. This is a removed proviso to the previous via Cupcake Bakery. No work will be done. Violation Article seven, Section four, other protectional conditions, remove the proviso. Name and address for the record, please.
Two fifty, two fifty Newbury Street?
Your name?
Oh, Little Miss Cupcake, and I'm Taylor Stumpf, the owner.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do?
Basically, change it over from a coffee shop to a cupcake shop. We already have our temporary license. We've been open since November eighth. It's just getting the permanent license from you guys.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faceh Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. There's no work to be done and no additional impact to the community. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Emily from Councilor Box Office. The councilor would like to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Savi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
And is this with the usual takeoff language?
Yeah, takeoff of this petition only.
Petition only, and the, okay, and the rest are taken.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-9226, two twenty Clarendon Street. This is install a storefront bump-out, renovate the entry and patio on Clarendon Street side, remove the existing facade, repair and re-point masonry, and enlarge window openings. The violation is Article fifteen, Section one, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article thirty-two, Section nine, this is in the G-Cod enforcement. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Laiden, two forty-five Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of linear retail, with me is Lauren Rogers, who's the Assistant Vice President for Asset Management. Also with me is Ralph Perlis, the Senior Vice President for Construction Management for Linear Retail. As the secretary indicated, Madam Chair, this is a very straightforward proposal for an existing commercial building located at the corner of Newbury and Clarendon Street. We're proposing a renovation of the retail space, which will also result in a bump-out for the front portion of the building to add, you know, add available space for outdoor cafe as well. There are only two violations, G-Cod as well as FAR. The building presently is non-conforming with respect to dimension when it comes to the FAR. FAR that's allowed in the zoning sub-district is three point oh.
So tell us what the, what the effect is of the bump-out. How much is it?
It's totaled eighty square feet, which is a negative eighty.
Eighty square feet?
That's correct.
And it's purely on private property?
That is correct.
Okay. And which diagram should we look at?
The best to look at is probably the proposed rendering.
Okay, okay. And so that's, is there already outdoor seating of that location?
There's not, correct.
So this is, this is purely at this moment for just the bump-out?
Correct.
Okay.
The outdoor seating located within the property.
But that'll come later. Because this is the only, and is Christian here?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Spennelli, Boston Water Trust, and we do have the BBAC approval letter. Just one minor comment. The approval letter lists the address is one oh eight Newbury, and the ISD address is two twenty Clarendon Street, but they are the same building.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter from Boston Water.
Excellent. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board?
What's the purpose of the bump-out?
To give this space a broader retail presence and storefront. The windows are very narrow on Newbury Street.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pimental with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have no concerns from this proposal. They received a letter of non-opposition from the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, and the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Emily Brown from Councilor Box Office. The councilor would also like to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, excuse me. Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Savi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Prindle, Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. Our organization is in support of this. It's been through the BBAC for design review already.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. There's no reason for design review because...
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Calling the next two cases, calling BOA nine seven six four three four ninety-nine Nashua Street. There is companion case, BOA one zero three eight one eight three, one hundred Nashua Street. This is a continued existing four hundred and eighty commercial, no fee parking for patients, visitors, guests, and employees of Mass General Hospital. Violation is Article six, Section zero three A. Additional conditions required in a restricted parking district. Article thirty-nine, Section twelve, the use is conditional. This is for companion case, one hundred Nashua Street. Mass General Hospital requests a renewal of employee parking use. Violation is Article six, Section zero three A, additional conditions restricted district, and Article thirty-nine, Section twelve, the use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jessica Camano. I'm here from Golston In-Stores, four hundred Atlantic Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here today on behalf of Massachusetts General Hospital, or MGH, to request that the board reaffirm its interpretation that use of the property located at ninety-nine Nashua Street for up to four hundred and eighty parking spaces for the employees, guests, patients, and visitors to MGH and its affiliates is a lawful pre-existing conditional use, and that no zoning relief is required. To be clear, MGH is not proposing any change of the current use at ninety-nine Nashua Street.
Wait, so why are you here? Was, as the use expired?
So in the existing zoning decision that was issued in 2012, there was a sunset provision that requires MGH to come back before the board to reaffirm the interpretation and continue the use.
And at what period of time? How many, after how many years?
So at that time, it was issued in 2012, and it was extended until 2019 by way of the Permit Extension Act.
So it was extended to 2019 when?
I believe in 2016.
So I'm sorry, too, what month in 2019?
April.
So April, so you're, so basically the use has expired?
Yes.
For all intents and purposes?
Correct.
And how many parking spots at one hundred?
A hundred and two spots at one hun, at one hundred, but that one is only used for employee parking.
And that's the same stipulation?
One hundred is different in the sense that it was not a pre-existing conditional use. At ninety-nine Nashua, the use predated the adoption of the restricted parking overlay district and the North Station district, whereas at one hundred Nashua Street, there are two conditional use permits issued that we would like to be renewed in order to continue the parking use.
And is, are those use permits still valid, or have they expired?
Those use permits expired as of December 2019.
Twelve nineteen, okay. Do you have any photos of what these look like?
So we have aerial photos here to show ninety-nine and one hundred Nashua, and we had submitted plans that show the layout of the existing parking as well.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The layout of the spot parking spots.
Any need for screening, buffering, anything interesting like that?
It's a little hard to tell from the plans. Is there screening and buffering?
Looks like there's some... There's a fence along the property, separating the property from the sidewalk.
What kind of a chain link fence?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay, is there anything like that? Okay.
No, there're not any in the existing.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faceh Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of continuing the existing use. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Emily from Councilor Box Office. We would like to go on the record in support of the existing use. We'd also like to flag that these parking lot assets may be important to consider as the city continues to review the major proposed redevelopment of MGH. The WECA, the Boston Preservation Alliance, and the council are currently seeking ways to avoid the demolition of three remaining historic west-end buildings on the MGH campus for the purposes of parking. Thank you.
So as far as ninety-nine to one hundred, the councilor is in support of that?
Correct, yeah, and I have a letter.
Okay, thank you. Jay?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jay Walsh, on behalf of the Downtown North Association. We've been working with Mass General as they're going through this process, as well as their updated master planning process, which I know that they're in the midst of with the BPDA, so we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? So may I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is this for a two-year extension?
Motion to give a two extension.
Three.
So, I'm sorry, hold on. Let's, let's just talk about this. Three-year extension?
Three-year extension with BPDA design review for screening and buffering.
Okay, BPDA, see if you can add trees or something that takes all, so, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos. See you before three years.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero three three six six two, twenty-seven Shave Street. This is seeking to change the occupancy from five residential units to eight residential units, renovate, destruction, erect a roof deck for an exclusive unit of unit seven. Violation is Article fifty-four, Section ten, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-four, Section ten, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-four, Section eighteen, roof structure restrictions. Article fifty-four, Section twenty-one, off-street parking, loading requirement, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Daniel Toscano from Drago Toscano LLP, located at fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass. I'm here representing, to my immediate right is Peter McGinnis, who owns the property at twenty-seven Shave Street. To my far right is Arthur Chu from Chu and Associates, who conducted the architectural drawings. What we respectfully request is to change the occupancy from a five residential existing building to eight residential units, and add a roof deck for the exclusive use of unit number seven, which would be on the front portion of the plans. Currently, you have a one-bedroom on the ground level, and then floors number one, two, three, and four have, there are nine hundred square feet, three-bedroom units. What we'd like to do is change that. So, ground level and first floor would be, have two units, will have be duplex units, two bedrooms, at eight hundred and fifty-three square feet, which would be duplexes on the first floor and, and ground level. On the second, third, fourth floor, we'll have studio units at four hundred and fifty square feet, except for number, unit number seven, which is the front of the building that's at five hundred and thirty-five square feet. Our violations that were triggered when we filed our long-form application is the roof...
So, so hold on. So, so this is, change the occupancy from five to seven units?
Five to eight.
Five to eight units, sorry. And then tell us about that roof deck?
The roof deck will be for the exclusive use of unit number seven, which is going to be approximately ten by fourteen, a hundred and forty square feet. The access to it is going to be from the existing headhouse, which would be interior The access to it is going to be from the existing headhouse, which would be interior stairwell to the existing headhouse that's there. There, there is no dimensional changes to the existing headhouse, um, for, for access to the roof deck.
Now, was this, this particular address before this board in the past?
It was in 2018, Madam Chair.
Yes?
Yes.
And what happened?
So it was denied, Madam Chair, in 2018. There were some concerns, uh, concerns where one was the utility, uh, the utility room was accessed from an outside door. We made some changes, so the utility room is accessed from interiors, uh, from the interior. And also, there was, uh, two other concerns. One was the existing headhouse. There was concern whether the existing headhouse, was there any modifications to it? There are absolutely no modifications to the existing headhouse. It's going to encompass the existence there, that's going to be internal to unit number seven, that's going to get access to the roof deck. Roof deck's going to be set back about 22 feet from Shaft Street. The building's about 80 feet long.
Sorry, it's set back 22 feet?
From Shaft Street, set back 22 feet, and the building's about 80 feet long, uh, 17.8, uh, feet wide, so it's going to be almost, not quite in the middle, but you won't be able to see it from the street. And the other, the other concern was certainly, uh, changing from five units to the eight units, making the studio units. We feel by doing so, we've done something in the past to an existing building that Mr. McGinnis owns on Hou Street, which is, uh, behind, behind Shaft Street, and it works in terms of getting more long-term tenant, it works a lot better. The current flow of the floor plan at 900 square feet, it's long, and you're really cutting through a lot of rooms to get from one room to the next, so we feel that the studio units will have long-term tenants. Total renovations of the units fully sprinkled, adding a new second, second stairwell within the, uh, within the building.
And this is just going to be stairwell, it's not going to be elevator building?
There's no elevator in the property.
Okay. How are the plans, um, Mr. Olick?
Uh, I'm a little concerned about, uh, unit size. You got units, uh, three through eight, which are about 450 square feet.
They're at 450, uh, square feet.
Seven is 513.
Seven is five. I thought it was 535, but, but 535, I believe.
So those are obviously undersized units.
Uh, studios. I, I believe they were at 450. And the two bedrooms are at 853.
They have, they're not, they're not a bedroom, they just have quote-unquote sleeping areas, right?
They're, they're studios, we're, we're.
So, so basically, these are all studios? These are going to be eight studios?
Madam Chair, there's going to be six studios, uh, two units, unit one, and unit number two are going to be two-bedroom duplexes at 853 square feet.
These are two bedrooms?
Those are two bedrooms. That's on the first floor and ground level.
Okay. So Mr. Olick, the, the concern is that the, um, studios are too small?
Uh, 450 square feet is awfully small.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, you know, this is, this is an ongoing, there's a desperate need for housing, and there's a, interest in density, but the way to do it, solve it, is not to pack people in like sardines.
Have you looked at other options? Because I, as I recall, that was, was an issue when, when this first came to this board, the size of the units and the configuration. Have you looked at other methods? Um, you know, you may not get your eight units, but you may get your better-sized duplexes that would work better in the space.
I would have to chat with, um, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Chu in regards to reconfiguring. However, we are decreasing, I know there's a, the density issue, we are decreasing the number of bedrooms, because floors number one, two, three, and four are three bedrooms. So we are decreasing the, the, now, the sleeping areas, so we feel that we're decreasing the amount of people, the amount of trash that's going to be, be in the property. And, and it actually makes the property actually flow a little bit better, rather than walking through from the front, through every single room to get to the back of the property. Like I said, it's, it's 17.8 feet wide and 80 feet long.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, my former colleague Maria Lanza conducted, uh, the community process related to this, most recently, uh, on a Butters meeting, uh, this past December. We would like to go on record in support. Um, the issue of density continues to be a concern among Butters, but they do have support from their direct next-door Butters. Also, uh, the previous use of this property was a rectory in essential, uh, it was a boarding house use, um, and so we believe going from that to condos actually decreases, uh, the amount of folks living in the building. Um, so at this time, in terms of the density issue, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Clarification?
I, I believe, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I believe she might have been spoken.
Okay.
The use has been residential.
Okay, let's just keep going.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. Um, and the council would like to go on record in support.
And so the counselor is, uh, in support of a 450-square-foot unit?
That's correct.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, um, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council of Asabi, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? So I just need clarification. So from the last time this project was before this board, the only thing that has substantially changed is that you've addressed the, the utility room issue. You've not addressed the unit size or the number of units or anything else. It's just the utility space.
Or the headhouse.
Well, the head, uh, so we did address the utility. The headhouse, the, the concern was whether going to be modifications. There was concern that we were making it larger, and we're not. There's, there's no modifications to the headhouse, it's remaining the same, just going to enclose the stairwell. And you're correct, there hasn't been any significant changes to, or changes to the, the unit sizes of, of the, the 450 square feet, we just feel that that's, uh, a, a better floor plan than what we have existing.
So it was denied in 18, so you waited the year to come back with the same proposal?
We have.
Exactly. Okay. Uh, we have clarification. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Are you, uh, is anybody else opposed? I too am, I'm, am opposed, but the motion carries.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-9665-19 White Street. This is no construction to be done, currently used as a three-family. The building is listed as a two-family. The violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading requirement. Article 53, Section 8, use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed habitable stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Gerald Abbey, 19 White Street.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
Um, just to bring alignment with the public record, the building's been taxed for almost two decades as a three-family. It's been bought and sold four times over the last two decades as a three-family. I purchased it in 2015 as a three-family, as my understanding. I inherited the tenants in the other two units when I purchased it, and I just want to bring it so it's correct on record.
Getting ready to sell it, then?
I'm not.
No?
I, I live there with my wife and kids.
That's, that's quite a, quite a turnover, four times in the, in the, in the last two decades. Um, so tell us about the third, the, the third unit.
The third unit, the dormer unit?
Whichever, whichever one you're proposing to legalize.
Um, yes.
Is it the attic or the basement?
It, it would be the third floor. There's an attic above it.
Okay.
Um, that's just storage.
And how large is it? What's the floor-to-ceiling height? So, Mr. Olick?
Can I hand out plans if you would like them?
Okay.
I mean, the drawings are just, they're existing.
Five square feet.
It's 535 square feet for that unit?
Correct.
And the floor-to-ceiling height?
I don't have it on here, but it's full height, I would say eight feet at least. All the, it's a building from pre-1900, and all the ceilings are high, like nine feet in line.
The brick buildings on the right-hand side?
Okay. Any, uh, any questions? How, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
No, I mean, the drawings are just, uh, to show what, to show existing, so.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, there were no concerns from the Butters. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards, and the council would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion approved.
I'll second.
Is that with no building code relief?
Yeah, with no, yeah, no building.
Then there's a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Before I call the next case, I'm going to go to 11:30. It's now 11:35. Are there any cases that are being deferred or withdrawn from 11:30? Counselor address, please.
37 Beach.
For the record, calling BOA 102-8114, 31 to 37 Beach Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street. On behalf of the petitioner, requesting a deferral, um, to allow for additional communication, um, with the community regarding this proposal.
Find out from you. How many deferrals is this?
This would be our second deferral.
This would be the request for the second?
Request for the second deferral.
Okay. Um, how far are you along in the community process?
Very.
I, I mean, I think the question is, you know, is it worth you?
It is.
Withdrawing this and resubmitting it and, uh, so that, or giving you a date that's far off into the future, so you're not here requesting another deferral?
I think we can have this wrapped up in the next 60 days.
60 days? Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
May 20?
May 19.
May 19th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals? Which, address, please?
71-73 Humboldt Avenue, Mr. Ford.
For the record, calling BOA 1004357, 71 to 73 Humboldt Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Um, do you want the short version or the long version, Madam Chair?
Well, I thought this was Mr. Sutford's final project. Is he away or where?
Uh, I'll, I'll have to give the long version. Uh, so this was here in December. Niles Sutford was here with the property owner. At that time, the matter was deferred owing to the discovery of a land disposition agreement with the Boston Redevelopment Authority that affected the property. Uh, Mr. Sutford, that was intended to be his final hearing. He retired. Uh, he emailed me and asked me if I would take over. I worked with the BRA. Uh, we discovered that the land disposition agreement for the property required that the property be, uh, developed at the time, this was 1961, I believe, uh, as a residential building. It contained eight dwelling units. The application is to convert, uh, the ground floor of the building, which sometime in the interim had been converted into a daycare, a commercial use.
So you're still in the process of sorting it out with the BPDA?
No, no.
So you're requesting a withdrawal or deferral?
No, I, unfortunately, it is a bit more complicated than that. Uh, the land disposition agreement requires that the building be used entirely for residential. The action before this board to convert the, uh, the, uh, sorry, to convert the daycare center on the ground floor into residential, two residential units would bring the property in, back into conformance with the LDA. Two issues before us. One, most important, the initial refusal letter incorrectly cited Article 53, the East Boston zoning code. So the original advertising was defective.
Yes.
Second issue is that Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association would like, uh, the property owner to come back again, uh, for a third time, to address issues of trash removal at the site. The property owner wants to go back to Garrison Trotter with Niles. Niles will not be returning from Florida until May. I've been asked to seek a deferral to allow for two things, uh, for the, uh, matter to be re-advertised with the correct reference, uh, under the zoning code, uh, and also to allow my client and Niles to go to a meeting of Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, which unfortunately cannot occur, perhaps until June, they meet the first Sunday of every month. Therefore, I'm requesting that this matter be given a rehearing date, uh, in June.
So may I have a motion, a two-fold, um, motion? One is that the, um, project be re-advertised, because I do see the citations for Article 53-8 and 53-56, uh, East Boston, and also the citation for 5029, which is Roxbury. Um, and the second is a deferral on, and, and the second is for a deferral?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date?
You're going to have a date of June 30th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Madam Chair, we have two, uh, cases we have to pull in that are being withdrawn, so I'm going to call actually two companion, one companion and one other case, so I'm going to call them in for the record, calling BOA 978-842-9211, Catherine Street. There is a companion case, BOA 978-484-13 to 15 Catherine Street. They are, they are withdrawing their project, so I'll make a denial, make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have one other case, case BOA 937-269-425E, Third Street, is withdrawing, so I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to go back to the 10:30 cases. Calling BOA 974-109-130, Bremen Street. Is Bremen Street here? Call the next case. Calling BOA 101-6541-119, Princeton Street. This is a renovate, change occupancy for a unit residential dwelling, erect an addition with roof deck. The violation is Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading requirement, insufficient parking. Article 53, Section 8, the use of regulations is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, excessive height. Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering requirement. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions, access. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, to my far right, Ricky Crespo, owner of the property, also with me is Triya Lareya, with Joy Street Design, who's the architect for the project.
Just for one minute, uh, just for the record, Mr. Devoe is recusing himself on this project. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is the, uh, this is a proposal for the preservation of an existing structure located the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. Uh, we would be proposing to do a complete rehabilitation of the entire structure, uh, and change the occupancy upon completion to a four-unit dwelling. Uh, as you can see from the plans and the renderings, um, special attention has been paid to the standards for the Eagle Hill Civic Association neighborhood. Uh, even though this does not lie within the historic district, uh, great efforts have been made to, uh, preserve the existing exterior, uh, as well as improve the conditions on the exterior of the building. By way of relief, uh, we require, uh, first, by way of use, four family would not be allowed in the, uh, in the, in the district. Uh, this is an existing, I bespoke said two families, it's an existing three-family dwelling, so we'd be changing it from a three to a four. Uh, the lot size would be sufficient, as well as the lot width, uh, in the front yard, which is a existing condition at Modal. Uh, we would be requesting relief for the side yard because of the, uh, proposed addition that we're adding to the rear of the building, as well as the dormers that we're adding to the top. Uh, we don't require relief for the rear yard because the condition at 30 feet would be sufficient under Article 53. Uh, there is a pre-existing FAR condition of 1.01, which is an excess of the .8 that's allowed under Article 53. Uh, with the increased living space, we'd be increasing the FAR to 1.33, and therefore variance would be necessary for that. Uh, the building, uh, as it exists and as it's viewed from the street line, uh, doesn't change much, other than the dormers that can be seen. However, because we are filling in a portion of the back portion of the building, uh, that would result in a violation for the height, uh, at stories, 2.5 is the maximum, we consider three-story building. Um, we would only be required under the code to add one additional parking space, because this is a, uh, pre-existing three-family dwelling with no parking. Uh, Article 53 provides an exception that requires only parking for the additional units being proposed. Uh, it would certainly make no sense to try to incorporate a driveway, uh, thus eliminating one and a half parking spaces on the street in favor of one private space for the building. Um, we did have an opportunity to present this to the Eagle Civic Association, uh, who supported the proposal, uh, including the relief for the parking. Um, the bedroom sizes, uh, I'm sorry, the unit count and bedroom sizes, uh, they range from about 1,020 square feet at the smallest, and that's a two-bedroom, up to, uh, about 1,230 square feet for a three-bedroom, which I understand are quite consistent with the recommended units, uh, unit sizes for those sized bedrooms. I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
So tell us how the garden level would work? Uh, first, what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
It's approximately eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. And what's the second means egress to that unit?
Through the, through the front stair, and there's also rear egress through the kitchen.
Through the kitchen, um...
Onto the patio.
Okay, so that's, that's their dedicated patio? Is that the patio for the second unit?
It's dedicated patio for that unit, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
I was just asking, so I was about to ask.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Are you speaking in support? Please, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this proposal received the support from the abutters and as well from the Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Benetti from Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards, and the Counselor would like to go in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor of SABI, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I request to defer in Princeton Dollar Street. They don't got a park at the night, the day. These people, they wanna do, the house, big house, for, for family. We had to park the car, that's why I live in Princeton Dollar Street. That's why I come, we are complaining.
Okay, so you're now...
Because these people...
I'm sorry, so you don't like it?
Huh?
You don't like it?
I don't like.
Okay.
No. They can, they park the car.
Okay.
The night already, they can do for the park of the car. About the second o'clock in the night, the fifth o'clock, you can't find the parking anymore. It's around all the time.
I see. And what is your name?
Antonio Gattuso.
And what's your address?
One-eleven Princeton Dollar Street.
Thank you.
That's why, I, I live over there for forty years. I go Christmas with the park at the night.
Okay.
I do some of things in the city or the Jersey. I go all the time to meet in Jersey, and the people, the city, the, you understand. I understand you are talking about.
Okay.
Now, the, the city of Boston, not for me. And the people that live in my neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is anybody else here to speak in opposition? Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA Design Review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, anybody in opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're gonna call the case I called earlier, calling BOA nine-seven-four, one-zero-nine, one-thirty, Bremen Street. Bremen Street here?
Yes.
This is extend the first-floor unit, living space into the basement, install new windows, build new egress, stair and deck, renovate interior, new finishes. Violation Article twenty-five, section five, this is in the flood hazard district, Article fifty-three, section nine, the flood area ratio is excessive, Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard setback is insufficient, Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient, and this Article twenty-seventeen dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Sixteen-fifty Commonwealth Avenue, Newton, Massachusetts.
Esq. Pratt, four-five-four Lowell Avenue, Newton, Mass., architect for the project.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Well, the client proposes to substantially renovate an existing three-family unit. The building itself will pretty much stay as it is, the exterior of the building, however, we are proposing a rear stair on the back and deck. The reason for that is that the existing stair, rear exit egress stairs insufficient doesn't beat code, so our intent is to build a new stair on the back and also a duck, a deck as, as, as well.
Is this, do I understand this right, that you're also exposed, proposing extension into the basement?
Yes, I'm sorry, it is extending into the basement. The first floor is extending into the basement to provide a, a three-family, a three-family unit. The basement is, the height of basement is actually seven feet two and ten inches, which meets code. It will be a bedroom and also a bathroom as, as well. That is the re, I'm sorry.
Tell us, how that relates to the flood hazard zone that it's in? Is that, is that no habitable space within the flood hazard?
Well, we aren't actually, the only touchdowns on the, touch, affects the ground plane actually is this, just the vertical supports for the, for the deck. So we're not building any, we're doing no additional excavation at, at, at all.
Can you please help, Jeff? Because if this is a flood hazard, it's not related to G-Pod or G-Cod or anything like that. It's a flood. So there's no habitable space within a flood hazard area?
Correct.
Okay. And this basement falls in the flood hazard area?
Habitable space.
It is, and which is a bedroom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so then, so you're proposing to add a rear deck and stairs, and this is a three-family, right?
Yes, the reason for the deck, that's why we have the rear setback violation, because of the, the building of the, of the deck.
Okay. And so this is an existing three-family, it'll continue to be a three-family?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Not only that, we're also proposing installation of a new sprinkler system as, as well.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Okay, the only question is about the plug, the plug.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak? Did you have a question?
No.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, there were no concerns from the abutters, and also this proposal received the support from Maverick Central Square Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Benetti from Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards, the Counselor would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? So given the information that we have, may I have a motion? It sounds like the extension into the basement is not going to work, so that, that piece of the proposal will be, need to be denied. However, the rear deck and stairs seem like they're appropriate, so may I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve the rear deck and stairs, and motion to deny the section into the basement as a result of the flood hazard zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You oppose the, the, at all?
Yeah.
Even the deck? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Do you wanna take, wanna go right through it, eleven-thirties?
So what do you think?
Yeah.
Let's, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at noon. The first applicant at Winship Street should be ready to present at the table.
Board of Appeal for February 25th is back in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. Why don't we get started?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the first case for rediscussion, calling BOA 101-3475, 24 Rhea, Winship Street. This is a confirmed occupancy as a single-family dwelling and constructed new addition. Violation Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, members. My name is Jeanne Puccelli, 28 Winship Street, Brighton, Mass.
Ma'am Puccelli, 28 Winship Street, Brighton, Mass.
Okay, just for the, to bring the rest of the board up to date, we had this case at the Subcommittee last week where the applicants were proposing an addition. I think from this aerial photograph, you can see the X being the subject property. Towards the rear, there is a house. And the owner of that house, the owners of the house, were interested in extending screening and buffering. And there could not be a meeting of the minds at the meeting on that Thursday. So we suggested that the applicants use the week, the 10 days, to solve their differences and come before us with a plan. If not, we will help them solve their differences. So can you give us an update of what has happened in the, since we last saw you?
In regards to the discussion and the agreement with the law?
Yes, yes.
We're actually now all in agreement.
You are all in agreement? Well, that is good to hear. After all our worries last time. May I have the abutters please come put your name and address on the record and confirm that you are in agreement and that things have worked out?
Yep, Chris Parisi, owner at 19 Shepherd Street. And we're withdrawing our opposition. They've agreed to provide a green barrier for us according to what we were looking for.
So you want to put your name too on the record?
Sure, Demita Joe Talbot, 19 Shepherd Street. Agreed, we've withdrawn our opposition.
Thank you. So given that information, this is a one-family dwelling, that's why it came to the Subcommittee with an addition. So I think let's have a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review to ensure that that screening and buffering occurs, okay?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 980075, 37 Colbert Avenue. This is a change in use from a two-family residential to a three-family. The change of use will conform to the existing additions which were present at the time the owner purchased the property. The violation is Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 8, three units in a 2F 5,000 sub-district are forbidden. Article 67, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 67, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Board, this, I'm Adam Rokoff, 28 Ashfield Street, Rosendale. I'm attorney.
So tell us.
Just running for my client.
Natasha Sevi. Thank you. So tell us why you deferred the last time and what you're proposing to do.
So you graciously allowed a deferral for the purpose of us providing some more dimensional information. In particular, you're looking for the precise FAR numbers. And we, I have had Attorney Mai Fong prepare summary, a zoning summary with that information. And just as a way of background, remind the board, my clients who are Albanian immigrants came here and then bought this house in 2004 in its current condition with, as a practical three-family. Over the years, it has been used for their family. And now they are in a position where their family has moved on. And they have much of their finances tied up in this house. So it would be undue hardship for them to not be able to rent this property legally.
But you know, I think you're an attorney, right?
I am indeed.
So financial hardship does not play any role in our decision-making?
Understood.
Okay.
Understood. It is very much a factor for my clients.
So tell us, tell us precisely, now that you have this information, how this proposal will work? Because I think there was some frustration from my fellow board members that it was hard, you know, not living down the street or around the corner from this, to understand exactly what was being proposed.
So if you look on the, under tab two, you'll see there's the layout of the building on the third floor, which is blown up in the last two pages. It works out to be 900 and I think 38 feet, allowing for the five-foot knee wall. It has, it would have a kitchen and two means, two means of egress. And it would allow a use of the, of the third floor that is as consistent with the, I know this is not a major factor for you, but many other houses in the neighborhood that have that same third floor.
So this is, this is.
Showing up on.
And has the applicant been paying taxes as a three-family?
Yes. If you look at tab number seven, you'll see since 2011, they've been paying it as a three-family.
And so from what I can gather from looking at the drawings, unit one is, the basement is storage, et cetera?
Correct.
Of unit one plus floor is 1228. Unit two, second floor, is also 1228. And the third floor is 938. And I, and did you put on the record what the floor-to-ceiling height is in the attic?
I, it is showing on the last page of tab number two. And I have to tell you that it's seven, eight and a half.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
I'm here for the record.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Joe Coppinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Demita did receive a lot of support from his direct abutters, as well as people surrounding the neighborhood at our community meeting. So again, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Hank Cohen, representing the Office of Ricardo Arroyo. We would also like to stand in support of the project.
Thank you.
My name is Jose Alves. I'm on 7 Ardennes Street, right on the corner from them. I support the project. I know them for a very long time, takes a good care of that house. I'm the Alfo, I don't have any problem with.
Hi, my name is Alex Malida. I lived on 42 Colbert Avenue, which is across the street from 37. I support this project. He has been a long resident on that address. Thank you.
Kristy Sevi. They're my parents, I'm their daughter. I support them.
Well, that's nice of you.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Constantinos Sabazidis. I live the 44 Colbert Avenue. Sevi is, live by cross-house.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Agim Haluli. I'm the owner of 14 Ardennes Street, Rosendale. And I came here today to support Sevi's family for this project to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-8309, 16 Shetland Street. This is a confirmed occupancy as a single-family, install woodstockade fence on top of the new perimeter block wall. The total height of the wall and fence is six foot six. Violation Article 50, Section 29, the front yard five-foot maximum fence height, side yard is six feet maximum height. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Michael Duffy. I'm here as an attorney representing the applicant petitioner. With me is Richard Artunian, who also represents the petitioner here, the Armid Realty Trust.
Were you would defer the last time?
Before the Subcommittee, earlier this month. And we discussed, I think briefly, what the project is, that was built here. This is a fence built on top of a masonry wall. The contractor.
And so, so let's just bring our, the rest of the, the board. This was before the Subcommittee, was it on, 10 days ago too? And I would refer you to this picture. This is what we had seen and that we had some concern and recommended that it come to the entire board, because this is the front door to the building. And so, so thank you for the package.
You're welcome. If I may, the petitioner is a real property trust, owned by the Barsumian family. They purchased this property, 16 Shetland Street, almost two years ago. It's a single-family home in need of renovation and repair. It's bounded almost entirely by commercial properties. On one side is A-Z Auto Repair. On the other side, abutting the side yard, is a parking lot used by A-Z to store cars that are the subject of repair. Directly across the street is the Ryder Rental Truck Yard. And that property is surrounded by fence, at least eight feet tall, with a barbed wire top on the top of that fence. The rear yard abutting properties to this parcel are Taurus Packing Company, which is a business owned by the petitioner's family. They've been in that neighborhood for over 20 years. And the other property abutting the rear yard is another residential property, also owned by the Barsumian family. This part of the neighborhood that this property is in has faced its fair challenges over the years. It's a relatively high crime area in the city, within Boston. It's within several blocks of what's affectionately referred to as the Methadone Mile. This property, in the short two-year time period that has been owned by the petitioner, has had a fair number of trespassers enter the property. And on one occasion, a trespasser was asked to vacate the property.
So I just, so I, I think you get the idea, what the, and so this, this entire property goes, looking at this picture, goes through a driveway, is that what it is?
There's a, there's a driveway beside it, and there is also a private yard that's beside and behind.
And what's the distance between the building and the fence?
Maybe five feet.
Five feet, okay.
The house is pretty close to the, to the street, it's very close.
Okay, and the fence is altogether six feet. Six feet, six inches, is that what it is?
Yes.
And the zoning requires six feet?
Correct.
Okay. And you, Mr. Olick, you've seen the plans before?
Yeah. I mean, it's always a little unfortunate that this is already built. There are plenty of good reasons to have built this fence, and the fence is nicely constructed and nicely designed. The problem is it's in violation of the height requirements. And I can't see, no matter how well-intentioned it may be, how we could approve a fence that is above the six-foot limit. So, you know, I, that would, that would be what I would suggest, that it get adjusted.
Any questions from the other members of the board?
I guess, could you explain to me the padlock? I mean, it seems like there's a padlock in the front. I mean, those are accessible by key only. So if there's an emergency, I'd imagine there'd be some issues in terms of egress or fire safety, things of that nature.
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're, I'm at that company, at Taurus Packing. I'm there like maybe 16 hours a day.
Does someone live in this property?
But, but you know, the thing I need to make very, very clear is the relief goes with the property and not with the ownership. You know, this may be sold tomorrow and, you know, it, those safety concerns will, will be exacerbated, you know? So I just want to put that clearly on the record. Okay, anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support, only because we didn't get any negative feedback from the neighbors on this. I do understand that the fence was already built, but we would have asked for BPDA Design Review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe, we got City Council Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support. The fence was built prior to getting authorization. We feel that it's a good-looking fence. It adds to the property quite a bit, and we're in support.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? So we're still struggling with this. We see a lot of projects, and we haven't seen one quite like this. And so any further discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
If I may just add one other thing. Included with my letter is also a letter from Robert Lewis Jr.
You know, that's, that's irrelevant, because I, I mean, it's relevant because Robert is very well-respected and very well-liked. However, we have our own concerns here. We see hundreds of projects and thousands of projects. So we need to figure out, is there a solution that you are proposing? Or are you proposing to go ahead as-is? I'm giving you an opportunity to, to think this through and perhaps offer us some kind of solution to this.
Yeah, I mean, one other thing, and maybe you know this already, is, you know, across the street directly, we have Ryder, the fences, like almost nine feet tall with barbed wire on it. And Fed Corp down the street is 15 to 20 feet tall.
So, I'm talking about your property, okay? Let's just stick to the project.
I'll be very, very blunt. I am very concerned about a gate that padlocks if you have someone living in there.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, nobody's living in there right now.
All right, well, so say there's someone.
So if someone is here, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't keep a padlock.
Okay, so let's, let's figure this out. We have two options. One is a motion to deny, so that the entire fence comes down. Two, that you modify the fence to six feet, okay? Or three, that in fact, where that gate is, you do not have something that that's, that that's solid. Maybe you put something else in there that doesn't padlock, that is, but however, is a gate. You know, that's your third option. So either offer us something, or we'll offer you something.
We'd be willing to modify the fence to six feet.
Okay. Can I make a motion then? I would move, first of all.
Sorry, Jeff?
It's five in the front, it's by code. So if they want to have six, so it'd still be a variance for the front yard.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, it, out of respect for what they've done and for the intent, my feeling is that we sort of cut the baby in half here.
Well, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make clear.
So we're going to make approval with BPDA Design Review, so we ensure that this is done correctly? And what's, what's?
So let me make a motion. First of all, we also ask to confirm the occupancy is a single, a single-family that would approve that, and with, with the proviso that the stockade fence be, be adjusted to a six-foot high.
All around.
All around.
All around, and that front gate be replaced with something more permeable.
That's, that's the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-5379, 210 Lincoln Street. This is a headhouse with roof deck, contractor. Violation Article 44, Section 34, restricted roof structure district. Article 44, Section 5, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 16, Section 1, the height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Jason Artwazepfer Architects at 315 A Street.
Hi, Jen Way, I'm the owner of the property.
So why did we defer you the last time?
We were initially appointed to see the Subcommittee, but.
Sorry?
So initially, we were, I think it was a scheduling problem. We were initially on the Subcommittee a couple Thursdays ago. And then Jim got notified that it got moved to this committee.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed then?
Yep, so Jen is the owner of the top-floor unit at 210 Lincoln Street. She is proposing a roof deck and roof house space for her family of four, going on five. The project.
Tell us about the roof house.
Yep.
What is that?
So it's, there is a walk-up stair that's going from her unit to a private space. It's about 14 by 14 feet that leads onto a roof deck.
Okay, and it's enclosed?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and what's the size of the roof deck?
We're showing 815 square feet.
I'm sorry?
815 square feet.
Was this addressed before this board in the past for this?
No.
No, not for this specific? Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
I'm just looking at them. How many, how many stories is this building?
It's nine, correct?
Nine.
Yeah. Nine stories.
Oh, okay, so you do need a headhouse. Okay. The plans are okay. Yeah, no, this, this had originally come before the Subcommittee mistakenly, because it was, it was thought that it was a good.
A single-family, a two-family, okay? And the headhouse, the dimension of that headhouse is okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good ma, good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Lisa High with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record to support. We held an abutters meeting on November 27th, and they have support from the Leonard District Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Fling's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support. We also have a support letter from the Leonard District Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 957-171, 49 to 49 Rhea Charter Street. This is seeking to change the occupancy from a six-family residential dwelling to a seven-family residential dwelling. Legalize the existing basement living space and renovate the building to have a fully sprinkled system. Violation Article 54, Section 10, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 54, Section 10, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 54, Section 21, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Daniel Toscano, Andrei Moskano, LLP, located at 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass 02109. I represent the petitioner, Dr. Simwella. I apologize for not being here. He had some medical patients that he could not, I guess, transfer to his schedule, conflict in schedule.
Okay.
I'm introducing Arthur Chu, who's, did the design for the property. This is an existing six-family residential dwelling. What we'd like to do is change the occupancy to a seven-family. What we want to do is confirm the, well, I'm sorry, add one more residential unit, which is existing in the lower level, which is the garden unit. Currently, right now, the prior owner of the property currently was living at that particular space. When Dr. Weller purchased the property, part of the agreement was to keep the current owner and give him a life tenancy of that property. The goal was to maybe move him into one of the existing residential units that are above. However, due to some, his, some impairments, he prefers to stay where he is. So what we'd like to do is renovate the existing space, create a, a unit at 509 square feet, studio unit. The height of that ceiling height will be seven feet 11 inches tall. It'll be full windows on the side of the property as the property slopes from front on Charter Street as it slopes down onto Forest Street. So you have full windows on the side. I mean, we could add, if we want, there's no proposal, but we could add a window on the front. There is several means of egress for that particular unit, Madam Chair. So by filing, we did encounter some violations. The existing, the required FAR in this particular area is three. We are at 2.66 right now. By adding the additional living space, we're at 3.15, so a little bit over than the three. The other violation is the open space. We are not providing any open space in this particular property. It's existing, so we have to, because it's in a multi-family residential sub-district, we have to put 100 square feet of open space. We're asking for relief for the open space requirement in the off-street parking. Because we're asking to increase from a six to a seven-family residential unit, we're required to have one additional parking spots. We have no parking on this site. This isn't a northern neighborhood. We don't have any means to provide parking, but we are closed to public transportation, so we're hoping that we can get relief from the parking.
And are you providing, proposing a roof deck?
No, so the original plans, that's why it was deferred. The original plan had a one-story addition with a roof deck. That has been eliminated, so there is no changes to the roof structure.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
I'm just looking at them. They, they look okay. So on the, on the garden apartment, you were making seven foot 11 ceiling height all the way through. Is it by excavating, is that?
No, I think it's existing now. It's already seven foot 11.
Okay, but the storage area is staying at six foot one, right?
On the backside of the property, correct.
Okay.
Originally, I think that was a separate building in the back.
Okay. The drawing's fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My former colleague, Maria Lanza, conducted the community process related to this. The reason why it was deferred was around abutters concerns about that one-story addition that has since been resolved, and at this time, we have no further concerns. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Michael Venetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Counselor would like to go on record in support of this project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Karen Foley, Counselor of Savi Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for your time.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-6349, 125 Addison Street. This is to raise the existing dwelling and erect a new building consisting of nine executive suites with parking for 10 vehicles. The violation, Article 53, Section 25, the use is conditional. And Article 2017-5, it's in the East Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Ricky Belago of Volney Capital, the owner of the property, along with Eric Zachrisson of Context, who is the architect for this project. Madam Chair, as the Secretary indicated, this is a proposal for what would result in nine units that would be designated for use as executive suites. I want to stress to the board that this property is located in the Economic Development Area of McCallan Highway, which is a district that has been established in East Boston since 1993. From the inception of when the Article 53 was inserted in the East Boston neighborhood district, executive suites is allowed use. When we filed our permit application for this back in July.
What, I'm sorry, what is the zoning district again? Did you say it's an EDA?
EDA, Economic Development.
And it's an, it's, it's a conditional use?
Well.
Executive suites is an additional use?
Now it is. But I think that's important to the context of the presentation, Madam Chair, because when the application was submitted in July, this was a permitted use. It is still a permitted use, it's just conditional as of January of 2020. And that was based on a zoning amendment that was submitted through the Zoning Commission back in December of 2019, which would have been after our initial public notice for this hearing that was originally.
So let's get to the meat of the matter. What is an executive suites?
By definition, I'm going to ask you that, so I want to make sure I have it.
Is this going by Article 2A definition of a zoning suite, executive suites?
Yep. Article 2A for the record is any dwelling, other than a boarding house, dormitory fraternity, lodging house, ority house, hotel, motel, or apartment hotel, in which living space with kitchen facilities, that's the, that's the key element here, is led to fewer than 10 persons who are not related by blood or marriage, adoption, or other analogous family union, and it's primarily a temporary abode of persons living elsewhere. So the 10, the limitation on 10 persons is satisfied by not doing more than nine units in this particular case.
Jeff, is this an amendment to the definition of executive suites? Or is it the original? Or is it the original that went through in two thousand?
No, that was the original definition.
Like the two thousands?
The amendment just dealt with changing from an allowed use to a conditional use.
Okay.
So when the application was filed, Madam Chair, back in July with Volney, when they purchased the property, the intent was to develop executive suites for that purpose as it is an allowed use in the district. The building was designed to be completely compliant with Article fifty-three and the dimensions set forth in the EDA. And that includes a forty-five-foot height limit, a twenty-foot rear yard setback, and an FAR of two point oh. The lot itself is five thousand square feet, and therefore, we're compliant with each of those requirements. In fact...
So you're proposing the raising of an existing dwelling unit and the new construction of nine executive suites?
That is correct.
Oh, yeah, you know what? I have a note to myself here before we continue any further that Mr. Rujuriel is...
Recused.
Recusing himself, thus, that just kind of changes the vote number, but you know that.
Understood, yes.
Okay, so please, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think, just for way of context, and I know the board, since the zoning amendment has not probably had a lot of these to address, I think it's critical to point out that the EDA, unlike other districts throughout the city of Boston, actually forbids residential use. So in order to permit an executive suite structure in the EDA district, asking for the relief that we're asking for is the least amount of relief that would be necessary for that use. If we were to propose residential use, you'd be requesting a variance instead.
But does it look like a bunch of the abutters are residential uses?
There is a mix, actually. There's commercial along Addison Street. There's a substantial amount of commercial directly across the street. And there is an executive suites actually being built directly next door to this property at one twenty, is it one twenty, one twenty-one? One twenty-one Addison Street as well?
How many?
Nine. And that was permitted by Wright, Mr. Olick, and that is under construction. When the property was purchased by Mr. Beliveau, again, the zoning was in place that permitted this as of Wright. And again, the public notice for the original hearing of the zoning was issued prior to any change in the zoning code. So while it is before the board in a conditional use permit, I think is critically important...
Okay, so tell us about these proposed units. Tell us what's happening.
So with executive suites, they are professionally managed. Mr. Beliveau has substantial experience in not only real estate development, but property management. And these would be managed in a corporate, for corporate-type rentals. This isn't intended to be built for an Airbnb-type operation. This is specifically geared towards having an account with a corporate placement agency if there are executives, attorneys, doctors, students, or others who need short-term housing, and not something that would require, or certainly wouldn't require them to go and have a hotel room for that period of time. It also provides for a living accommodation. By allowing this type of use and to maintain it in the EDA, it actually does take some of the pressure off the underground Airbnb or other executive suite-type arrangements that may be occurring elsewhere in the neighborhoods. Executive suites are not allowed, obviously, in the three-F or two-F or one-F districts.
And how large are each of these units?
So each unit, the units range from about six hundred and seventy square feet up to about eight hundred and ninety square feet.
Okay.
And again, these are intended to be apartment-style, but they're not capable of being sold as individual condo units. And part of the requirements under executive suites is that they are professionally managed for purposes of operating the building.
And is this an elevator building?
No.
No.
No, so is that a handicapped unit?
Yes, the ground-floor unit would be handicapped accessible.
Okay. And, okay, and they seem to be primarily a couple of two-bedrooms?
That's correct.
Yes. Other than the first-floor unit, they're all two bed, two bath.
The notice indicates, Madam Chair, that there are ten parking spaces. The zoning code in the EDA only requires seven parking spaces. We actually are providing eight. So we're ahead of what the zoning code requires, but the notice actually indicated more. There's not any additional zoning relief that would be necessary to have that number of parking spaces on site.
And do you have a corporate client?
We haven't locked someone in yet, but we've been reaching out to set something up once we move forward. We're still a long way out from when this would be constructed.
So what's the average length of stay?
It would really be up to the corporation. But the most of the conversations we'd be having is these are people who are going to be coming in, working on a project somewhere in the three to, you know, or month to six-month range, working on a project locally for some company.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, I mean, I think the plans are okay. I think the issue is, you know, the question, do we use an executive suite as a use, a conditional use? And so maybe it's unfortunate for your client, the timing, but the reality is we're dealing with this now in February twenty twenty-one. The current zoning codes are in place, so regardless where we started, it's now February twenty twenty, and that's, you know, that's the only date we need to consider.
But through the chair, the executive suites are not forbidden in the EDA.
Additional?
In fact, they're intended to be in the commercial districts.
And you're looking for conditional use.
Yes. And what was, did the BPDA have a recommendation on this?
When it was submitted?
Yep.
No, because it wasn't a conditional use. It wasn't allowed use.
It wasn't allowed use?
It was an allowed use, and I think only the iPod was triggered, which...
So subsequently, there's been no, okay?
No.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Can I ask another question, Madam Chair? I mean, one of the problems with executive suites is it seems sort of as being outside of the various regulatory formats that are available for your hotels, Airbnbs, or whatever. What is your position on this particular product? Because it's under ten units, it therefore escapes that kind of regulatory oversight?
So my understanding through the chair is that the executive suites is not going to be subject to the restrictions on short-term rental, same as for lodging house. But in this particular case, the executive suites is a specific use that, along with that, requires the professional management. Unlike if a lodging house were to be established, there's not the same oversight or requirement. From the building code standpoint and from, I'm sure, the city's enforcement standpoint, if this is registered as executive suites for use, then professional management needs to be in place. And that includes having people on-site to deal with the building. So there's a little bit more of a heightened oversight than, as opposed to if there was a lodging house...
Is there some work on site?
Yeah, there could be, or, but most, you know, we have a lot of properties in the local area, so we have people working all around managing units nearby.
So let's just spend a moment on that. So you're not going to have an on-site person. How many units do you have in the local area?
So we manage about three hundred and fifty units, the majority of them in East Boston.
So you manage, you're a general management company?
Condos and rentals.
Condos, whatever it is.
Yes.
Okay, and so that's how you fall under the purview of general management? Because I can see where the problem would come up if somebody just says, "I'm creating this management company to manage my own twelve units," for example. So this is how the, how it's managed?
Right, yeah, we're a fully insured management company.
Okay.
Managing around the city.
Do you manage other executive suites?
No, not to date.
So from the city's perspective, what is the checks and balances on this? To ensure that there is, it doesn't become something else? And I don't know who the question is, who I should be addressing that to.
I mean, I think that's part of our customizing.
That is? Okay, so, okay, so let's see, go ahead.
Just to add on that, this goes with the land, not with the owner.
Correct. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go in the record on opposition in this proposal. At this time, the abutters have many concerns regarding this proposal. Also, based on an administration, the Mayor's Office is strongly opposed to new conversions from existing houses to short-term rentals and executive suites. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? This is a conditional use?
Can I just add one comment? I feel it's important, and I do a good deal of work with Ms. Tramelli in the East Boston neighborhood. The abutters' concerns were not about the executive suites. The abutters' concerns were if it's executive suites, will it be professionally managed? That was a commitment we made through the community process. We did explore the conversation of doing residential use at this site, and the neighbors specifically stated that they were fine with executive suites, provided it was professionally managed. That was the reaction we got in the...
Little chicken-and-egg deal here is because...
Wanted to be clear.
Yeah, because the fact of the matter is that...
The issue is that we're going to do executive suites, that we truly do executive suites and not, ironically, not try to build it and then convert it to housing. That was the specific issue at the abutters' meeting.
You know, we are more concerned going over that slippery edge, that slope going the other way, where, you know, it starts off as executive suites. It ends up as, you know, lodging houses or other kinds of buildings like that.
That's a zoning change, and that would be a zoning change.
But, you know, you know, and so the question is, how can we respond to this? Because I understand the need for executive suites, and I think it's a longstanding use. What are the conditions that we can place on this to make it work? So, you know what? I think what we might need to do is have the law department help us on this. I mean, we've never done this before, but to really consider, consider what the check is, because there is going to be, I'm assuming, an increase in the number of requests for executive suites. But we need to just make sure there's a protection in place.
Madam Chair, if it makes sense, I'm happy to work it through with the law department on the conditions, on appropriate conditions that could be imposed as part of conditional use.
I'd like the city to work through the conditions, not the applicant, because I think there's ramifications citywide. And so we need to have those conditions come from the city, through the city, so that we have a standard boilerplate that's going to protect residential neighborhoods.
I think that's reasonable to have the law department look at that.
Okay, so we're going to send this to the law department. May I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first one, I believe, that we've had since January first. There was another one on the agenda today that either withdrew or deferred. So it's clearly something that's going to come, and I would agree with the chair that we need to have a consistent policy on how we're going to approach it. So I would make a motion that we refer the, this case to the law department for their advice and review.
And let it come back through the BPDA so that we know that all the dots are connected on Airbnb and everything else that might be making its way through zoning.
I second that motion.
Okay, and we will have this come back as call of the chair.
Call of the chair.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
So there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Going to call the next case, calling BOA 889-514-343 to 345 Chelsea Street. This is to raise the existing building, erect a three-story building with retailer grade and six residential units on floors two and three. Violation Article fifty-three, Section fifty-four, screening and buffering abutting residential sub-district. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, insufficient off-street parking spaces. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-seven point three, traffic visibility across the corners. Article fifty-four, Section twelve, insufficient open space. Article fifty-four, Section twelve, insufficient rear yard setback. Article fifty-four, Section twelve, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Frank Sharippa, who is the owner of the property, along with Dan Artigies, who is the architect with Embark Studio. Madam Chair, we were, we deferred this matter on a total of three separate occasions, actually. Two of the most recent reasons for the deferral were to work with the director-abutter, who has an adjoining building to the left of this property for purposes of understanding the destruction and the impacts that this would have. We did have a chance, since the last deferral, to have a meeting that was facilitated by the district city councillor, at which time, a number of items were set forth as to concerns. I believe my client has responded that we are prepared to do any and all things reasonable to ensure that any concerns that were raised relative to construction activities and demolition, including delivery of plans to an engineer that we would pay for, as well as addressing concerns during construction. All of those things that we've agreed to have been put forth back to the abutting property owner.
So let's go through the project, so ground floor retail.
So the proposal would involve the demolition of the existing, there's an existing one-story commercial that occupies the entire lot, Madam Chair. We're proposing to replace that with a three-story mixed-use building, ground-level retail at a smaller scale to allow for some building amenities and six residential units above. Each of those units are one-bedroom. Those units would be about six hundred and twenty-five square feet average, some a little bit larger. And this building, as you can see from the photos that we provided the board, is on a prominent corner that enters Day Square, the southern tip of Day Square. So as you can see from the photos, the existing building now is somewhat, would be somewhat out of scale with everything that's happening around it. This board has approved a number of projects in and around this area directly across the street, directly behind this. And one of the things that we were asked to do during one of our deferrals was to consider lowering our original proposal from four stories to three to be consistent with the height of the buildings that were recently approved around us. And we did that gladly and readjusted our building, eliminating a number of units as well. I would point out that this is located in the neighborhood shopping district, which is defined by Article fifty-three. Neighborhood shopping specifically, specifically encourages these types of uses, including ground-level retail and residential at the upper levels. And the height limit is thirty-five feet. So I want to just point that out early on in this presentation that we are consistent with the use and compliant with the use on Article fifty-three. We're not asking for any relief for that. And we're consistent with the height that is acceptable under Article fifty-three in the district despite the fact that there are buildings taller than our proposed building.
So just clarification, are you in a FEMA flood zone then?
We are.
And so how are you going to respond to that? So there's no occupancy at the ground floor, however...
Commercial occupancy is permissible, no residential occupancy.
But how about the elevators?
So it'll have to be all flood compliant? I think Dan can speak to that.
So per the FEMA guidelines, we will have to be, we have to be compliant with the freeboard elevation, which I believe is, at this location, one foot above finished elevation. We'll mitigate that within the building. We have an entry corridor that allows us to mitigate the foot inside the building as well as with the retail space.
So with respect to the relief that's necessary, this being located in a neighborhood shopping district, ground-level retail and multi-family residential is allowed as a matter of right. No variance necessary for that. There is no minimum lot size in neighborhood shopping sub-district. We have twenty-five hundred and two square feet, and therefore, are compliant with Article fifty-three as well. Our minimum lot width is, we have twenty-five feet. There is no requirement for any lot width in the neighborhood shopping district, so therefore, compliant. Our front yard would be a modal setback, consistent with what's presently existing on the site. We actually have pulled the corner of that building back based upon some comments that we heard in the community process to ensure that the transition around the corner is sufficient. There is no side yard requirement, no side yard proposed, and I want to stop there for one moment because that is the issue that we did take a deferral for last time. The adjoining abutter is a business known as Mario's Restaurant. The specific concern that was originally raised was relative to our wall and whether or not our wall would interfere with their wall. When we removed our wall, there was a specific concern over damage to their property. Our architect has had a chance to go back and look at the original building plans for both buildings and can state specifically on the record what the conditions were that were observed and how demolition this building can be accomplished without any specific concern for the abutting property. So Dan, if you could just allow...
Now, what we'd like to do is, we know that that's a building department issue, so we'd like to focus on the zoning, that's before us.
Sure. With respect to the floor-to-air ratio, two point three-nine is what's proposed. We're at one point oh, I mean, one point oh is the maximum. Two point three-nine is consistent with all of the surrounding properties. Each of those pretty much fill out the entire lot because they are corner lot condition. We are at thirty-five feet, which is the maximum height limit. And again, we've reduced this building down from forty-six feet down to thirty-five at the request of neighbors through an eighteen-month community process for this project. We do have some open space that can be accessed through balconies and other openings. One of the other requests that we did respond to in the community process was not to include a roof deck on this building. We specifically removed that from the plan, again, in response to direct abutter concerns.
Okay, hold on.
Sure.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
I mean, drawing to find a technical point of view, it seems a little kind of out of context. The design is sort of a boxy, modernistic design with a kind of wood facade stored from buildings nearby. It certainly could stand to the designer deal.
We, yeah, we explained that through the process, that there really seems to be no specific precedent in that part of Day Square. We're going from... We're going from essentially art deco that's there now to something, you know, that we're trying to transition between.
Don't want to do art deco?
Well, I mean, there is one across Prescott Street that's currently under construction that seems to maybe fit the character of the neighborhood a little bit better.
We did look at that. That is entirely a residential building.
Correct.
So we certainly can look at that through design review as well if this board is willing to grant that approval, but that's something that, you know, is a conversation that we typically have in these projects.
I would echo Mr. Ehrlich's sentiments that it's out of context, in my personal opinion.
Understood, and we certainly are willing to work through design review on that. I think with...
Hold on.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I have supplied.
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to discuss the process that I support and the end result and conversation that I hope will happen. As you may recall, last time I was here, I opposed this project in hopes that they would continue their conversations. Since then, my office has been deeply involved, actually, in this case, starting mid-January. We've concerned ourselves in conversations and good faith work with both sides to try and come to a deal, a consensus deal. Yes, they, to the proponents' point, we actually asked them to come down to 35 feet so they're within the surrounding zoning. To their proponents' also point, they are in a commercial district and they're proposing a mixed-use property. Also, we are in the middle of Plan East Boston, and that area is planning for and will be very likely upzoned, so their plans are consistent. That being said, the abutter has expressed valid concerns about the structural impact on her building. We sat, we talked at length with both sides to try and figure out how to not just ensure but assure the abutter that she would be okay in this process. What was on the table, and what I hope is still on the table, and why I would support this project if it's on the table, is the following. First, the proponent agreed to pay for an engineer to review the demolition plans and to go out and look at the buildings to survey those impacts. As in a neutral person picked by the opponent, they would pay for, and they would look at those plans to give her the assurance that she needed. Second, the proponent agreed to an escrow account, which is the first that's ever happened, where they agreed to put monies upfront to assure that if there was any impact on her building while the other one was coming down, that she would have access to financial support to support her building. We also agreed to provide access to the plans to the abutter after the BPDA design review, but before they would be reviewed by ISD. They agreed to give the number of the contractor, who was managing the construction, directly to the opponent, so that she could have constant access to make sure if there's any point where her business is impacted, she could stop or manage that construction. This is all very important because it's the first time our office got this intimately involved in and moved back and forth, and that's a deal that's still on the table, I hope, and that's what I support, that going forward. When speaking with the abutter, she is not opposed to growth in terms of the building itself. She is absolutely and rightfully concerned about its direct impact on hers. The walls, there's no breathing room between them. Her back deck is literally built into their building they're going to tear down, which they also agreed to fix for her. So these are all the things that I think are important, and I support that deal going forward, and if that does. And I support that, and I hope the proponent, regardless of what happens today, will deal in good faith with her and continue those conversations. Thank you.
Councillor, can I ask you a question? The discussion about the design issue, about whether this was appropriate contextual, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I actually did some research and looked at the square, historic square space, and there was, at the time before a large fire in Day Square, there was a building of this height. Actually, all of Day Square was much higher then, there was a large fire, so it's not out of context to have this height and to have mixed use. We are doing everything, actually, to bring up the square, to have additional commercial space. We're doing also an East Boston tax, or excuse me, transit plan, and that's going to directly impact this area. So in terms of its design and, or use, at least it's consistent in that area. What I am hoping for, again, is the continued conversation that they agreed to, that before it comes to ISD with that design from the BPDA, that the abutter would have, again, direct impact and perspective.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. I have City Councillor Michael Flaherty. The councillor would like to go on record in support. He believes this is a good project that's been deferred three times already in the past. The hang-up on the project, as the councillor so eloquently put, has been a business term between neighbors that the councillor, at this point, is not in the business of dealing with those specific business terms. The project is consistent with five recent projects within close proximity to this one that has been approved by this board in the past. Therefore, he'd like to go on record in support, and if approved by the board, he'd encourage the proponent to continue to work together with neighbors, specifically the director-abutter, during the construction phase.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in opposition for this proposal. At this moment, we didn't receive enough support from the abutters. They still have many concerns, especially regarding design and the parking and how it's going to affect their business. I have a petition of opposition, and also Eagle Hill Civic Association voted against this proposal. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in opposition? Please hustle, get your name and address on the record, and give us new information, please.
Good morning. My name is Ursula Imbriano. I own Mario's Restaurant. I may ask if my son can speak on my behalf today.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I appreciate your time.
So, sir, your name and address.
My first name is Anthony, last name is Imbriano.
And please don't read to us. You can put your testimony into the record, but just give us your highlights. We've already heard others speak on your behalf, so give us new information.
Understood. Here to speak on behalf of my mom. The main concern is the zoning and the density of the project, and Day Square does not meet the current zoning that the laws that are in place at this time. In addition to the concerns she's already expressed in the last meeting, due to the distance between walls and the fact that it may jeopardize the structure and possibly collapse and affect our business where we've been for 36 years. That has always been our main concern, continues to be our main concern, and the fact that the project doesn't meet zoning, we all know that's why we're here, and we hope that you take our opposition in consideration with your decision. Thank you.
So is your, is it opposition, pure opposition?
Correct.
Or, okay, because it sounded to me like there was some, something else in the works. Okay, thank you.
There was, okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, if I could, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Is there, so the councillor, I think, laid that out pretty well. Is that something you are not open to at all?
We had discussions after the last meeting. We did have a meeting. We sat down about potential solutions to try to find a path and try to make things work and come to agreeable terms for both parties in their best interests, and I feel like we haven't made any progress since then. There's been some communication. We've tried. There was some last-minute responses, as late as last Friday at 4:10 p.m., so at 4:00 on a Friday going into a weekend. We were supposed to get the proposed building plans of the new project. An engineer needed the building plans of the new project specifically of what the foundation was going to be.
Okay, just let's stop right there. Let's, I think we have enough information before us. Thank you. Please have a seat.
Thank you.
Mr. Ehrlich, I'm going to address this to you, Mr. Fortune likewise to you, because we have had this issue about building and building stability where the issues were very similar. We looked at a project, was it on Federal Street, where everybody was concerned about .0001 movement? Is that, did I have enough decimal places in place on that one? You know, where we know that the ISD monitors these very, very carefully, and so I think we've had a bit of experience in this. So let's look at it from a use perspective and say that this is a neighborhood shopping district, and as the attorney has said, the neighborhood shopping district, the intent of it is to have ground floor retail and upper floor residential, and that is across the city. So it appears that the violations are, you're actually meeting with the FEMA flood zone requirements, you're working your way through that. Sounds like your FAR is what's triggering this, and your open space essentially, and the iPod. So given that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So there are two people opposed. I'm in support, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
For approval with design review. We trust that as an applicant and people who are before us frequently, that you will continue to make your usual good-faith effort to work with the abutters, and you will be going through design review through the BPDA.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 998-963-100 Lexington Street. This is to raise the existing building and erect a nine-unit residential dwelling with nine parking vehicles on a newly created lot. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking design, the size, the access, drive, and maneuverability. And Article 2017-T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Ricky Beliveau, Volne Capital, the developer for the project, along with Eric Zacherson, who is the architect with context.
Just one minute again, please, just to note for the record that Mr. Rugirio is recusing himself.
Madam Chair.
Speak through it.
This property is located in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. This proposal would combine two existing lots that contain two single-family dwellings.
What's the zoning district?
2F2000.
2F2000, and what's the lot size?
Lot size combined would be 5,000 square feet for the proposed development.
Okay.
We are proposing to erect a nine-unit residential dwelling. The nine units would also have nine parking spaces located on-site. The process for the design of this building, again, based upon working through the Eagle Hill Civic Association, was to ensure that the standards for architecture, design materials are consistent with the expectations that Eagle Hill sees in these types of projects. I believe we do have a rendering included showing what the finished product would look like, trying to demonstrate what it would look like in context for the surrounding neighborhood. With respect to the relief that would be necessary for this project, because this would be a multifamily, variance would be necessary for use. We would have sufficient lot size at 5,000 square feet because the minimum requirement is 2,000. We would have sufficient lot width at 50 feet, seeing that the minimum requirement is 25, and we would have a modal setback that would be in alignment with all buildings along that side of Lexington Street. We do meet the side yard requirement as well, three foot on each side, that would allow for both the sufficient amount of setback that's necessary in Article 53, as well as the building code for unprotected openings. We are proposing a rear yard at this point, a modified rear yard at 20 feet, which is an increase from 10 feet that was originally proposed based upon feedback that we heard throughout the community process.
Sorry, so your side yard is three feet on both sides?
That is correct.
Okay, and so you're proposing to have a central driveway to the parking in the rear?
That is correct. There is one or two spaces located under the building, or three, three spaces located under the building. The height of the building, Madam Chair, and again, this has been reworked based upon community process, is four stories at 40 feet. The maximum height is 35 feet in the district. One of the things that we did also include with the adjustments to this project was eliminating the headhouse and the roof deck based upon community concerns and comments. We are, again, proposing nine spaces total, and that would be one for each unit if this is completed as a condominium unit.
So tell us about the FAR.
FAR is 2.3, the maximum is 0.8 allowable.
And then it looks like your parking violations are design and maneuverability. Bob, have you had a chance to look at that?
No, I didn't think that there was a violation on this, so I didn't look at the plans.
Okay.
Are they over there?
I can get you to step up.
Did you read maneuverability, or I might have just been hearing maneuverability?
Good.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure that, and so you're voluntarily providing one IDP unit, so this is proposed as condos. Give us the unit breakdowns.
Yeah, so I wanted to just echo that. So part of this process as well, some of the things I think you'll hear today concern, you know, obviously affordable housing, developers proposing nine units to escape the requirements of IDP. Mr. Beliveau, doing the number of projects that he does in the East Boston community, you know, understands and respects the need for affordable housing, and although every project can't include that, especially the ones that are under 10 units, he was motivated in part by comments from the district city councillor recently relative to the criticism over nine units. So one of the ideas here is to include an IDP unit, although not required, in exchange for the relief that's being requested, and we think that that's hopefully going to set an example for projects throughout the neighborhood going forward. We do have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, actually studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units, ranging from about 500 square feet all the way up to about 1,800 square feet for the largest two-bedroom.
But tell us the size of the studio.
500 square feet.
And the one-bedroom?
One-bedrooms are...
Six, seven.
The six.
Six, seven.
Six, seven.
670, two bedrooms?
930.
Okay, and the three-bedroom?
Anywhere from 12 up, 1,200 up.
12 plus, okay. Okay, Mr. D'Amico, the parking?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I see five spaces. I don't see nine.
While they're looking at it, Madam Chair, we've submitted, I believe, a close...
In the meantime, hold on. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, if I could just add, we support.
Representatives of elected officials, please come and put your name and address on the record. Tell us what the opposition is based on, and for everybody else who's speaking, I'm going to take three people from the community, so please organize who you are and tell us the reason for your opposition, and just a reminder, give us new information. So the three people who are back there, give us new information, okay? Elected officials and representatives of elected officials.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, my name is Lydia Edwards. I represent District 1. I have received copious amounts of letters in opposition to this particular project. The local civic association, Eagle Hill, which is a reasonable civic association that has gone back and forth on many projects, has overwhelmingly rejected this as well. This is a tearing down of two single-occupied homes to create a larger nine-unit building, and that's something that we understood. The mayor came out basically saying he was no longer going to be doing that in East Boston. Right now, we're also dealing with people, or we have an issue of some individuals who feel that they're being displaced from this, and we also have many people who are looking at the design and believing that the tearing down of these particular units goes against the historic nature and the character of the neighborhood, so I do not support this project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in opposition. During the community process, this proposal didn't get enough support from the abutters. They have a lot of concerns. We received many letters of opposition from the Eagle Hill community, and as well, the Eagle Hill Civic Association voted against this proposal. Thank you.
Do you know what the opposition was based on?
Was based on, give me one second, number of units, floor-to-air ratio, and as well that many people are going to be displaced for these units.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other representatives of elected officials?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jacob de Blakort. Here on behalf of City Councillor Julia Mejia. We would also like to go on record as in opposition to this project. We have also received a number of emails and phone calls from residents who are not in support of this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Councillor Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Mayor Walsh's office as well as Councillor Edwards herself, the councillor would like to go on record in support, in opposition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councillor Sabi Georgi's office. Would like to go on record in opposition for all the previous reasons. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to hear from three residents. Please organize among yourselves and make sure you give us different new information. Your name and address, please.
You take your hat off, sir.
Si, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Luis Eraso. Soy inclino de la hacienda de Lexington.
Okay, hold on. Ask him, please, to take off his hat. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Luz Amrano, and I'm going to be translating for Luis. I also live in East Boston, and I'm in opposition of this, but I'm here to translate for him.
Tell us what he just said.
He, his name is Luis Eraso, and he lives in 100 Lexington Street. He is a renter there.
Okay, thank you. And he's in opposition?
He is in opposition. Because he's a renter, he's been evicted.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? I, oh, thank you. Oh, he has more to say?
Yeah, yo me opongo porque realmente tengo mis niños y no hay renta en otro apartamento. Hay mucho desalojo.
Yeah, I'm in opposition because I have my kids, and I've been evicted of this place, and it's really hard to find apartments in East Boston.
That, is he done?
No, I'm just asking.
No, realmente estoy muy preocupado porque día tras día hay mucho desalojo en mi Boston.
No, I'm really concerned because it's so much eviction in East Boston because of these buildings that are being built.
So, we know about his eviction concerns. Thank you. Next person, please. Next person, name and address on the record, and please bullet point your concerns.
Will do. My name is Dan Bailey. I live at 73 Utah Street in East Boston. I want to point out that the legal requirements for zoning relief have not been met here. There's clearly no hardship. These houses are currently occupied and in use. The proposal also isn't in line with the purpose and intent of Article 53, which states...
Will you come and you say that to us? Tell us very specifically about this proposal.
Yeah, so this is clearly a nine-unit building that's in a block of sort of smaller workers cottages that are historic buildings. It clearly doesn't meet the purpose and intent of the code in terms of advocating for buildings that match the scale of their surroundings. It also involves demolishing two workers cottages that were built in the 1840s that are, of course, currently occupied as family housing. They've served as family housing for like 180 years in East Boston. They could go on serving as family housing for another 180 years if we let them. Even though they're simple vernacular homes, they're worth saving. They contribute to the walkable scale and the character of this block of Lexington Street. And although this will be reviewed by Landmarks, I want to remind you that Landmarks only has the power to impose a 90-day demolition delay. They don't have the power to prevent demolition of the buildings, so I ask that you keep that in mind. Part of the stated purpose of Article 53 is also to protect the environment, so this kind of demolition and replacement of houses has a steep environmental cost, of course. So, when we demolish a house, we waste everything that went into it. When we replace that house, we're committing to all of the carbon emissions and pollution that come with that. The city has a goal to become carbon neutral by 2050, and this kind of development and practice works in direct opposition to that goal.
Last time you gave us the number of years it took for the ROI. So, what's the ROI on this one?
It can take up to 80 years of more efficient operations for a new building to overcome the carbon emissions associated with its construction. So, we really don't have 80 years, you know, to wait until we start reducing our carbon emissions in the city. This is also a proposal, this proposal is also an example of land speculation that's playing out right in front of us. So, Volney Capital has these houses under agreement. They don't actually own them yet, but they're under agreement for $700,000 each, and...
Now, can I just hear from somebody else? May I hear from two abutters, please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I hear from two abutters about the direct impacts on you? Give us new information if you do not have, excuse me, new information? Put your name and address on the record, okay?
Sure. Thank you, Chairwoman. I was very conveniently behind Dan, I guess. My name's Leonard Olson. I live at 97 Lexington Street, right across the street from the proposed development, apartment 2, that is. I also work with a community nonprofit in East Boston called Empower East Boston, but I'm here today as a resident, as are an entire group of folks here. We're all standing in opposition, and I hope you will listen to all of them. I also have a petition that I'd like to put on the record.
If you have time at the podium, please tell us and bullet points new information, okay?
Okay, well, I'll start with all the direct abutter opposition. We have 99 Lexington Street, 95, 97. We have 109, 104, 116, 94.
So far, I've heard the displacement. I've heard about the tear-down, the number of units, the FAR, and the eviction. Is there new information you want to give me?
There is new information, Chairwoman. Thank you. I'll focus on the special qualities of the neighborhood, then. I also know Luis very well and his family.
Are you talking about quality of life?
Correct.
And what specifically?
So, specifically, as I just listed, we spoke with a lot of people on Lexington Street, and every single one of us values highly the quality of life in a family-based lifestyle on the block. Luis is a great friend of mine, a very respected community member as well. I celebrate birthdays with his family. We have a lot of, basically, neighborhood life.
Trying to be very, give you an opportunity to talk to me about facts.
Sure.
I like heartstrings. I like all this stuff. But here we are talking about facts. So, we have a proposal before us. Give us a factual response, okay?
Sure. I would argue that that is a fact, that this proposal is going against the special qualities of East Boston, of Lexington Street, and of the design of that block, specifically of single-family homes, and the idea that families will be living on this block, right? So, that is my main, and I'll just again, point to the fact that this building is in use, being occupied by a family who values it, and they're well-being to rely upon it, so, thank you, Chairwoman.
So, Counselor, as is our usual process, there are a number of issues, which I've just read out the list. Can you give us a response, please?
Can I take them out of order?
You can take them out of order.
So...
And the one, one of the additional one was demo delay.
Can we at least have other people on the street to put their names?
We can circulate a list. We can circulate a list. You can put your name on the list, okay?
I have new information to share, please. I respectfully ask...
Please go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also add that we've submitted a list of letters of support. There's 32 letters. I understand there was some...
Okay, let's give it to the staff.
Including direct abutters. We did have an opportunity to have an abutters meeting on this. There was one direct abutter who did appear that did not have any objection to the project. And so, hearing all of this and understanding how the genesis of this opposition was generated, we certainly understand how this came to be first. And I've certainly monitored this over social media. We keep hearing about the historic nature of the buildings, and that gets tossed around in this room a lot, and we certainly have had these conversations before. I have to state for the record, because I think it's important for the consideration of the board, that we are careful in looking at historic properties and determining whether or not those are ripe for redevelopment, or should they be preserved. This particular property appears nowhere on the state or national historic register. It is not landmarked. It is not pending landmark. It is not even in the Eagle Hill Historic District. So, to state they're historic is another way of just saying that they're older buildings. Sure, they have charm and character, and that's why they're likely have been inventoried with the Boston Landmarks Commission, but that does not create any special status for these buildings, and we hear this time and time again in this community.
Yeah, we get it. Move on to the next issue.
I just want to make sure that's clear on the record. Second, with respect to displacement, and that we're displacing people, these are two, when put under agreement, two owner-occupied structures where the agreement was made with the owners who chose to move on, who chose to sell their properties to Mr. Beliveau. They weren't forced to do so, and these are not tenement housing where they're being asked to evict people.
So, these particular lots, these were not rentals? The people who live in those spaces own the building?
They were not. That is correct.
Okay, so let's...
Yeah, I want to address that, because I think there's been some...
That's not true.
That's not true. I'm sorry, but that's not true.
So, the information, the information that we have from the real estate, these are owner-occupied properties. I've looked at the agreement with the gentleman whose first name is Luis. It was occupancy as of September?
30th.
30th. That was during the pendency of this transaction. That was, according to our conversations with the owner, that was something he understood was happening as part of this process, and that this was not a long-term rental, and that is certainly not the classic case of displacement that we constantly hear from many of the advocates here, who I respect what they do, but let's not make this something it isn't just for the sake of making that argument.
Occupancy by this particular tenant has been from September 30th of 2019.
That is the information that we've seen.
With the clear understanding that this is temporary and at-will occupancy.
That is correct.
I can see it will.
That is correct. So, there was never an act, there should have never been, and this is constant struggle in the displacement argument.
Okay, so let's go on.
So, with respect to the building itself and the adjustments that we've made to the building, it was specifically, yeah, we have a copy of the lease. It was specifically requested through the Eagle Hill process to consider a number of items, including making the building smaller, which we did. Again, Mr. Tramelli has indicated that there were concerns over specific issues, and that the Eagle Hill Civic Association voted against this project. There were subsequent changes made, and a subsequent abutters meeting held where a number of those issues were addressed. So, I just want to make sure the record's clear, that we pay attention to the process. In fact, the process is extensively long lately in East Boston, and we take great pride in going through that process. So, we have made changes to this project based upon those comments. When we had that abutters meeting, there was no specific...
And what were the changes? Just, you know, just out of my curiosity.
Reduced the building depth, so there's a 20-foot setback in the rear. Reduced the overall bulk of the building, so the total square footage has been reduced. Eliminating the headhouse and the roof decks, and ensuring, and then the update to add the commitment for the one IDP unit, which, again, I'm hearing housing advocates, and we're offering something that they've been critical of as part of this process. So, we're including that and not obligated to do so. So, I think that, you know, those changes and those concessions that we're agreeing to should be considered as part of this process, and that's the give and take that's happening right now with development, not only just in East Boston, but throughout the city.
Okay, thank you. So, board?
Excuse me, can I respectfully request, I have some context information.
Given this information, oh, Bob, parking. Tell us about parking.
Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. This parking plan does not work. There's at least five spaces that would be very, very difficult.
I'm sorry, speak up, please.
Of the nine spaces, five of them are very, very poorly located, and they're very hard to maneuver to get in and out of, number one. Number two, the photograph that I see has parking where it's not reflected on the parking plan, so I don't understand that. So, I have to really, I have to make it clear for the record that this parking plan does not work.
Can I respond, Madam Chair, on the parking?
No, I understand, because you had said there was a three-foot side yard on both sides. So, that we understand is neighbor's parking, that beetle is neighbor's parking. So, given this information, may I have a motion, please?
May I please request, Mayor Walsh just proposed changes to the zoning board to be more transparent and friendly to the community, and you are not doing that.
Can I have a motion, please?
Several of us took the day off work to be here. Will you please just let me, I have new information that has been not said.
Okay.
Please, I'm begging you.
Enough, we have, enough. May I have a motion, please?
Make your motion to the judge.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case.
Calling the next case, calling 932-844-192 Gladstone Street. This is demolish an existing structure located at 192 Gladstone and erect a three-story, five-unit building with seven parking spaces. The violation is Article 2017. This is in the East Boston I-Pod. Article 52, Section 25, off-street parking loading requirements, insufficient parking. Article 53, Section 8, the MFR forbidden in a two-family sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback conformed with the existing building alignment. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. And Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Anthony Fava, Sun Property Group, the proponent, along with Tricia Lareya from Joy Street Design, the architect for this project.
So, why were you deferred the last time?
We were asked to take a deferral with ONS to take a look at some of the opposition that we were provided. We were provided that day of the hearing. I did have an opportunity to meet with ONS relative to that. We questioned some of the opposition that was submitted, including people that we knew were in favor of the project, that were appearing as opposition, so we wanted to get that straightened up before we went forward. I have submitted 18 support letters to the board for this project.
So, it's still five units and seven parking spaces?
That is correct.
Okay, so please, tell us, walk us through the violations.
Well, just quickly, it's an existing two-family home on a 5,200-square-foot lot. We would demolish that and construct a five-unit building, and that is also in direct response to concerns that we heard from ONS in the neighborhood as to the number of units that were being proposed. We actually reduced this from an original proposal of more units. This is located in 2F-4,000 district. The residential structure would have a total of 5,300 square feet and would be intended for homeownership upon completion. With respect to the relief that's necessary, Madam Chair, this would be a multifamily use, which is not allowed in the district, however, not the only multifamily use in the immediate area. We do have the minimum lot size met, as well as the lot frontage in the front yard. We do require a variance on the left side. We do have sufficient on the right side. We do have a rear yard proposed condition of 24 feet. 27 and 1/2 feet would be the requirement, because we do have a shallow lot exception existing on the current lot. We've done a good job of trying to keep the density of this structure down as close to the 0.8 that's allowed, so we're at 0.99, and that was based upon the lot size that we have, as well as how we've managed to adjust the inside of the property. Our open space is at about 2,800 square feet, based upon a use of multifamily, the 2F-4,000. There is no open space requirement, however, I do point out, there is a sufficient amount based upon the calculation of 2,800 square feet. We only require it to have a total of six parking spaces. Seven spaces are being provided. This will also create an opportunity for the direct abutter, who we've worked very closely with, on adding driveway access to his property to address some of the on-street parking concerns, so we will grant an easement to the adjoining property owner to allow for access to his parking as well.
And parking is in the rear? Rear garage?
Correct. It's accessed through a 10-foot-wide driveway, and you enter through the rear of the building.
Okay.
Madam Chair, all units are two bedrooms, two baths, and they're average of about 1,000 square feet plus per unit, so they are consistent with the minimum size requirements for units, as recommended by the BPDAs. When we originally proposed this as a larger project, we did go before the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, who voted in the negative on this. We did have a...
You know how I am? I look at my base point as what the zoning requires and not what somebody would like to design.
Understood.
So, okay, so I think you've covered everything. You've covered a number of stories. You've covered, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I'm fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Alana Mastronzi. I'm a direct abutter and owner resident at 188 Gladstone Street, and I support the project. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Leah Sapparicido. I own 91 Ashmore Street. I review the project and I support the project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Vannetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards, and the Councilor would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak? Are you speaking in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in opposition. During the community process, we feel that there's still many abutters that have concerns, especially regarding the excessive of floor area ratio, the number of units, and the number of stories that are going to change the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Briefly, I just will point out again, the original FAR was higher in response to the concerns that we heard. We lowered that FAR.
So listen to my baseline.
Understood.
Okay.
Nothing further, Madam.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, I deny.
Is there a second? There is no second. May I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, the final thing for today is the Zoning Advisory Subcommittee, which met on Thursday, February 13, 2020, at 10:10 Mass Ave on the fifth floor. The following hearings were heard. Case BOA 101-8491, ADA Chelsea Street, was to remove proviseal from the previous BOA decision. Petitioner only, was approved with takeout. Case BOA 103-53888, 133B Street, was to confirm occupancy as a single-family. It was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 951-993, 138 Adams Street, was a change of occupancy from a bodyyard establishment. It was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 100-8156, 56 Lockstead Avenue, it was finishing approximately 2/3 of the basement. It was approved. Case BOA 103-6054, 21 Homewood Road, it was a small one-story addition. It was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 102-3526, 363 Vermont Street, adding a second story to a single-family. It was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 102-9466, 7 Willner Court, was to construct a new shed dormer on the second floor. It was approved with VPDA. Case BOA 102-2294, 9 Pratt Street, removed the existing porches, dig footings. It was approved. Case BOA 100-9854, 135 School Street, was proposed convert an existing one-family to a two. It was approved. Case BOA 102-1322, 21 Virginia Street, it was expand living space. It was deferred to the full board on April 7 at 11:30. Case BOA 997-186-70 Fletcher Street was a denial without prejudice. It was withdrawn. That concludes the Subcommittee.
May I have a motion, please?
I want to keep in care of the recommendation of Subcommittee.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned.